Good evening. This is the July 18th, 2019 meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. We're meeting in Town Council chambers. It is now 7:02 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as all.
Will the Commissioner please introduce yourself, starting on my right?
Ryan Condon, alternate.
Kenneth Wilk, alternate.
Bruno Maiene, Commissioner.
Leanna Rosi, Commissioner.
Liam Porter, Chairman.
Scotch outside, Town Engineer.
Will Agatha, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Thank you. Commissioners Lisi and O'Reilly are excused from this evening's meeting. Ken and Ryan, you're both seated tonight. General public participation. Is there anyone here who would like to address the Commission on an issue that's not related to an application or hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. General appointments. 7 and 15 Main Street, mixed-use development, 11,000 square foot retail and 11 one-bedroom apartments. Can we run these all together? That's up to them, I guess. Can we run the... Oh, it's one?
Yes, please.
All right, and then...
Please.
This also addresses the property directly across the street at 4 Main Street or, and also 7182 and 7192 Main Street Trumbull and 7180 Main Street Monroe and Trumbull. Mixed-use development, 40,000 square foot retail, 14 one-bedroom and three two-bedroom apartments. For those in attendance who are not familiar with a general appointment, this is an opportunity for an applicant or a prospective applicant to address the Commission about potential project. None of this is binding. It's just for them to get a general feel for how the Commission feels about what they're proposing. Okay. Mr. Solley, the floor is yours.
Thank you. For the record, my name's Kevin Solley. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solley Engineering. Office is located here in Monroe, 501 Main Street. With me here this evening is the project architect, Hans and property owner, Mr. D'Esso. So, we're here to talk to you about two different pieces of property just north of the town line in Trumbull, for some people very excited about. I do have some handouts of the presentation I was going to hand out for the Commission, just so you guys can... So, we're very excited to be here tonight. As I stated, the two projects we're talking about are just on the southern end of the town of Monroe. This area shows the town line. You can see the two sites are just north. And actually, one property straddles the town line in Trumbull. So, this is just a little bit of wider area. You can see, first property is a collection of properties that is along the town line. It's on the east side of Route 25, former property in Monroe, Oregon. And then, the second parcel is to the west side of Route 25. This is 7 and 15 Main Street. So, the two properties are both Zone B1, which allows for commercial development. But, we're actually here this evening to talk about some conceptual plans that we have to develop these properties, which we really feel will be a really exciting project for the community and a really sort of gateway as you enter into the town of Monroe. But, what we're looking to do is actually create a mixed-use development, which includes not only a combination of commercial with retail, office and restaurant space, but also we have an interest to introduce some residential and some mixed... residential multifamily units into the facility as well. So, I'm going to talk through what we're thinking from a project, from a concept standpoint, and then talk through some initial concepts we may have on how we may want to address this from a zoning standpoint, get some initial feedback, and then obviously, we'd be looking to work with the Regulation Subcommittee to talk about how to possibly achieve these goals. But, we're just excited to hear to talk about the projects in general. So, as I said, you can see Route 25 runs north-south. The two properties are just along the town line. The southern one's in Monroe. The property on the east side of the road, see, this is the former Elmo Mistry property. It's currently improved with D'Esso Mechanical. There's a hodgepodge of commercial uses here. This site's a little bit down in the hill. The driveway comes down and it's a little bit lower lying. And then, I'll postpone that. And I will state, I did want to say for the record, if you're familiar with these sites, there is some activity on the properties to the east side of Route 25. The property owner is currently doing some wetland remediation work towards the rear of the property, which is including some excavation and actually some sorting through some materials to put material back in a hole. I will say that when they had a... when they pursued those permits from the Wetlands Commission and did have a pre-construction meeting, they're now realizing that they didn't necessarily get all the zoning permits associated with that work. So, we do recognize that. We're going to work with staff to remediate that. And obviously, as part of these applications, we're really excited because we think that what they're starting to do here in terms of cleaning up this property, what we're proposing there, we're looking to be a great addition to the community.
When does the applicant intend to work with staff on these missing permits?
We can... we'll come in to meet with staff tomorrow or as soon as their schedule allows. We'll come in early next week. And then, to the west side of Route 25, as you come into the town of Monroe, as you come through here, this is all a big hill wooded area. 27 Main Street, which is the Shooting Sports Academy, is just to the north of those properties. But, this is... these properties are essentially undeveloped, wooded. There are some residential houses on it, but this is a combination of actually two parcels, 7 and 15 Main Street. So, just to change the orientation, now Route 25 bisects the property. You can see the orientation between the two. This is the form or shape of your mountain property to the north of 7182 Main Street. So, what we're proposing to do is to construct two projects, one on each site, that obviously be independent applications because they are independent properties. And as the Commission may be aware, there's been some other informal discussions about some adjacent properties, which you can kind of see here. This is a contemplated Victoria Place, which is just north of these two properties on the east side of Route 25, which I believe is currently in kind of a due diligence phase, preliminary design phase. But, we think that these projects collectively could really serve as a true gateway to the community and really be a great addition. So, 7182 Main Street would essentially be a proposed development that would include approximately 30,000 square feet of retail and restaurant space, about 8,000 square feet of office and storage space, and then up to maybe 37 apartments with a mix of one bedrooms and two bedrooms, primarily one bedrooms. So, what we were hoping to do is create an opportunity to do commercial on the first floor, residential units above. We think this really could be a great addition to the community with some really nice architectural features, landscaping, screening, et cetera. So, we're excited about what the opportunity for this could potentially mean for the town. And then, across the street on 7 and 15 Main Street, we'd be looking at doing a multi-level facility similar where we'd have potentially 10,000 to 15,000 square feet of commercial, retail and restaurant space on the lower level with access up to a second floor, which would be access from the rear of the property, which would provide access to apartments. We'd be looking at maybe 10 apartments in this facility. And you can see, this would be the potential elevation of what would face Route 25 with the rear elevation facing away from the road. But, you can kind of see how the grade would transition from a work standpoint. Now, obviously, for us to propose this, the current regulations do not contemplate or allow mixed-use development or multifamily development in the community. Now, I know that there's been a lot of discussion, this Commission has reviewed a lot, the Plan of Conservation Development, which is about to be updated. It actually did talk about looking at and exploring some multifamily options in the community. And there are a number of different approaches and mechanisms that we could propose to create to allow for this type of development to come into the community. What we're currently talking about is a mixed-use development, which would include commercial or retail on the first floor with multifamily apartments above. And there are a few different ways we could approach that. And from the Commission's fore, and then we'll go work and work closely with the Regulation Subcommittee to refine that. You know, a simple way to do it would be to simply add multifamily above retail as a permitted use in the B1 zone. Given the, you know, the nature of the zoning in the community, that may open up a little bit... may open up a little bit of a Pandora's box. So, there are a few other ways we could potentially approach it. One would be to explore an overlay district or a... almost a special development district where we can define and establish a corridor that could be eligible for this type of development. But then, each individual application would have to come in, write its own reg associated with that specific project. And this is something consistent with and similar to what happens in the town of Newtown. They have a special development district, which essentially spans Route 25. And you can bring in specific applications, and then with those applications, you're eligible to have some additional uses. And the Commission has given a little more flexibility in interpreting the regulations and applying those regulations. So, that could be one thing that we could look at, or we could maybe kind of establish a corridor along Route 25, really work with the staff on where this may work. Another option we could pursue would be to, rather than establish a larger design district or, excuse me, a larger overlay zone, we could also look at creating just a specific design district. This may be a little bit more restricted from a geography, geographical standpoint. We could highlight some specific sites that we'd want to consider. But, we think that in general, the introduction of multifamily units above retail, creating that mixed-use component, really could serve as a benefit to the community. It could open up some additional housing options that don't currently exist in town. And it could really kind of create some really very exciting opportunities for some mixed-use developments, which is really kind of the trend that we're seeing throughout the, you know, the region. You know, with that, I'd be happy to kind of get some initial feedback from the Commission to see if, one, if developing or establishing a way to have mixed-use developments is something that the Commission would be favorable of, and then maybe some feedback on what mechanism you think would be the right way to do it from a zoning standpoint.
Does Trumbull have any mixed-use regulations?
They do. They actually have, in a couple of different parts of town, they have an opportunity to do residential above retail or commercial. There's a zone established kind of right in the center of town, across the street from Town Hall near Stop &amp; Shop, which establishes some parameters for that. There are also some other parts of town where they consider something similar.
Well, seeing as, you know, a portion of the easterly property is in Trumbull, are there any regulations currently that pertain to that piece of property that would allow mixed use?
Currently, the property in Trumbull is zoned business, so it allows the commercial. However, we've had initial discussions with the Trumbull Planning Department, and what they recommended was, that property currently doesn't allow the mixed-use component, but they're supportive of it. What they suggested was start with Monroe, because obviously, we're not only interested in the property that bisects or straddles the town line, but also the property across the street. So, we do think that there'd be a benefit to pursue this with Monroe first, which would actually maybe even influence what Trumbull would be doing and would be looking at as well.
About two years ago, I don't remember who it was, but somebody came in, I think it might have been a general appointment, asking about mixed use and the potential for mixed use in town. And at that time, there was kind of a mix across the board with the Commission that who was in favor, who wasn't. I personally felt that it was something that we should pursue, especially since a lot of our current commercial property owners are having a difficult time filling their buildings. This might be an opportunity for some of them, in the right conditions, to utilize some of their empty space. But, as you know, we have very narrow corridors. You start introducing a residential component, the septic is going to drive what can and can't fit on a piece of property. And I think that in many, many conditions or situations, it may not be possible. I also was in favor of a geographic, either an overlay or a design district, where we specified that, you know, on this stretch of Main Street, we would consider it based on these conditions. And we never got to a point where we developed any of those conditions because it was down on the list of priorities at the time. You know, with the new POCD, actually, Town Council just approved the contract Monday night, so that's going to be gearing up relatively soon. And, you know, mixed use is one of the topics that we want the consultant to hit on during this process. You know, what can we do? How can we do a mixed use and still keep the town the way that we want the town to be?
Of course.
So, it's something that we are considering. We haven't gotten far enough along to really, you know, have any specific information about it, but it is something that the Commission is considering. So, that's about all the input I can give you in that regard right now. But, like I said, you know, septic is a big issue. That property on the west side of the road is all rock. You're going to be able to get septic in there?
There's actually some very good septic soils up on the westerly edge of that property, so there is adequate area to accommodate a type of development. But, you're absolutely right. Your point is well-founded. One of the town's limiting factors, obviously, is the fact that we are a community that's on septic system. So, I think the introduction of mixed use, the properties themselves are going to be a big driving component in terms of restricting that, to really put those protection measures in place so it doesn't get out of hand, because I think there are some communities that may have overplayed their cards, so to speak, when you look at some of that things. So, I do think that Monroe has a little bit of an added protection measure where there's going to be real limitations, especially if you look at something where there's a mixed-use component to it, because you're not going to sacrifice, you know, build out of commercial space to get apartments if the overall development in its whole isn't going to support itself financially. To the east side of the property, the southern reach of that property is in Trumbull, so that southern portion of that property does benefit from the ability to connect into the Trumbull sewer system.
The one on the east side?
On the east side, correct. Which is why, from an intensity standpoint, that project would likely be a little bit more intense on the residential side, because it would have the ability to tap into a sewer system, which would alleviate that issue from a septic standpoint.
And you think that entire project could tie into this Trumbull sewer on the east side?
Yes. I think, you know, based on some initial conceptual sketches that have been prepared, it's been designed so that those buildings would all be located, at least partially, in Trumbull, which means they would be eligible for connection into the sewers. And that is consistent with actually, that I think there's one property in the town of Monroe where the building straddles the town line and that property is connected to sewers. There was some precedent for that.
Okay. Who else has any input?
So, if you build all this and you hook into the Trumbull septic or sewer system, is that going to impact financially the town of Monroe? Because obviously, they're not going to let you hook into their system without coming up with some kind of financial agreement with them.
Well, they do have sewer use fees, as most communities that offer sewer, there are sewer use fees that connect in, and then also to use the sewers and discharge to it. That wouldn't affect... I don't think that would affect Monroe financially. I think the overall development of these properties would have a significant contribution to the overall tax base in the community, because you'd be creating a lot of, you know, increased property value and physical infrastructure improvement. So, the overall development of this piece, even if a portion of it's in Trumbull, would have significant economic contribution to the tax base. And then, also on the west side of the road, 7 and 15 Main Street, you know, this is entirely in Monroe. So, any and all, it would be a considerable economic boost from a commercial tax base standpoint.
Ryan, anything?
Yeah, I do like the idea of mixed use, if we can limit it. My, obviously, anything, and you know this, on 25, we'd want to have concern with traffic and looking into that. What's this road here going to, or the parking lot over the Trumbull line? Is there another property all in Trumbull that's going to be getting tied into this?
No, there's actually, if you're familiar with this area, and it's a little hard to see on this area, like, I think I need to apologize for that, but there's actually the old... there's an old road which comes through here and connects into 25 almost right here. So, this portion of the property actually has frontage on a town road, not the state road. The state road comes along through here, but there's a southern loop road which kind of runs along here and feeds a couple of residential properties. And there's this large, kind of no man's land of property where the DOT owns, there's a DOT green in China. There is a small parcel right at the corner, which is owned by the same, the applicant that owns 7 and 15 Main Street. This is one Main Street, but, you know, there is not another community that would need access through the property. It's really just extension of that road. And frankly, from a planning standpoint, we've been looking to have some conversations with the state and potentially the town about what we can do about this right of, like, because it really kind of creates like an awkward access, circulation type thing, which could really certainly potentially be improved.
Okay. Yep, that's it for now. All right. One more. Can you go back to the picture with the houses and stuff? Yeah, that one.
This one?
Yeah. So, the one on the right, I'm assuming is going to... that's Trumbull, right?
Yeah, I think the town line is probably like this.
Okay, so that was my question. So, that one, one of those... one of those... okay, so are both of the housing in Trumbull, or is it going to be?
No, there would be some... so, even though we have the town line that runs through there, there'd be, you know, potentially residential units above the entire facility. And these are very preliminary plans and renderings and architectural elevations that we're just starting to establish and formulate. So, I think the concept is, you know, there'd be residential above the entire, you know, footprint of this development, not only limited to one side.
Oh, okay. I thought the two brick buildings were kind of where you were putting all the...
No, we would do... so, this entire first floor, floor plate would be commercial, retail, restaurant space. And then, the second floor plate would be, you know, some combination of residential. There may be some office.
So, it looks like, just from looking at it this way, it looks like most of it would be in Trumbull, correct? So, that would probably allow to tap in...
Let's say about half.
About half?
Yeah.
So, I was just thinking about the sewer system. It looks like, to me, most of it looks like it's in Trumbull, and then tapping into their sewer system would alleviate the problem with going to a septic on the other side.
Exactly. Right. So, this development on 7182 on the east side...
Yeah, the other one's in Monroe.
Right.
That one I understand. I was just talking about this one. I like it. I think it's... if you build it like this, it's beautiful. I'm all set.
Yeah, I just... we've discussed about mixed use already. I think it's the best thing is to bring it to the Subcommittee. I believe that mixed use will also help support the business of the community.
Sure.
So, I guess that we're doing our POCD, and that's one of the things that we mentioned that we wanted to find out about, mixed use.
One of the difficult things that, as I run it through my mind, in developing a mixed-use regulation is, you know, for a project like this where you're starting from scratch, it's a lot easier to have design standards and meet that.
Right.
But, when we're trying to fit a mixed use into a very shallow, long piece of existing commercial property, you know, that's where we have a bit of a challenge coming up with a usable regulation.
Right.
So, I'm not saying that it can't be done, but it does... there are some difficulties in making it work, but I think that it's something that the Commission would like to make work.
Well, I really appreciate that positive feedback, I think. It certainly has some challenges, but we're up to the challenge. Sometimes we like the ones that are a little more challenging. So, I certainly think, you know, again, we appreciate the feedback. Does... can staff also offer some?
Sure they can. They don't... this is all informal.
Of course. We like informal feedback.
Really, I mean, we've talked so much about the specifics of these two zones, but, you know, when you look at mixed use, I think it's not just commercial and residential. You have to look at what are you trying to achieve? What is mixed use for Monroe? Isn't necessarily what is mixed use for Santa Monica, California? I mean, you have to look at what are you trying to achieve? What are you trying to connect to? And you should learn about mixed use. And, you know, like, Leon, you said that the residents would support the businesses underneath. Well, of course, they're going to go to Baylo shopping, and, you know, it's convenient, right? But, there's also a level of density that requires this support to resident, commercial, because we have a lot of vacant commercial, right? And some of it's around, you know, and Stepney is around housing that's, you know, around it. Not exactly maybe walkable, but that's another issue, walkability and stuff. So, I mean, obviously, I don't think the residents of one development is going to feed the commercial development when it's isolated to itself. So, you have to think of those connections, and how does it connect with other parts of the community and whatnot. But, you know, we need... one thing we do need now is apartments, rental apartments. There is a big demand for that right now, especially if it's more on the more... I don't want to say affordable, but not the luxury level. Because there's a lot of demand there and few options, especially in a town like Monroe.
I actually have one more question. I'm assuming since you brought this to us, you've done some sort of study on this, or...
We have, and there's been exhaustive studies. A lot of people have been considering trying to incorporate a mixed use or a multifamily component to the community. There's been a number of... there's been a number of... I know of at least one application where we're trying to create a village district. Done a lot of exhaustive study about, you know, the need for these in the community. There's always the big question about, what's the impact to the schools and schoolchildren and things like that? When you develop something that's, you know, the smaller, one bedroom, two bedrooms, things like that, and you're giving that other housing option as an option in the community, we've looked at that exhaustively in terms of what that potential impact could be. And the good news is, on developments of these scale, there really is... there isn't that much of an impact. We can kind of talk through that as obviously we progress this discussion.
I mean, common sense would tell you, one-bedroom apartments generally probably don't have a kid or...
Exactly.
Or a single father, single mom, or something along those lines.
Right.
Two-bedrooms, potential for a single mom or dad to have a child, but...
Or a home office.
Right, or something. Right, something along those lines. So, the studies that you've seen or you've researched or looked into are pretty positive, I'm assuming?
Oh, absolutely. We wouldn't, you know, the one thing about...
Obviously, you're not going to bring something forth that you hear and think, oh, this is terrible.
Right.
Let's give it a shot.
There needs to be an economic viability, and I think, you know, based on, as I think, well, what is... there's a need...
No, Will's 100% right.
Yeah.
You know, people are having less kids, so... but to live in a town like Monroe or Trumbull is not easy.
Right.
And for you to have an option to live in a nice apartment, still reap the benefits of a town like Trumbull or a town like Monroe is a great idea.
Anybody else have anything?
Bill, I just have one comment. Before I left Shelton, my Commission amended its recs to allow a similar zone to the B1 to allow residential. They restricted it to one bedroom, and it involved new construction. It worked very well. And right after I left, it started catching on, and it went to a parcel adjacent, which was an existing older commercial building. So, the Commission was very pleased that it was the carrot for economic development in older sites that were adjacent. So, it did work well. We only used it in a small location. This is a little bit bigger, but still pretty on the small side.
How'd you limit it? How'd you limit the location?
What's that?
How did you limit the location in Shelton?
Well, we have a similar B1 zone, and it was just a small little pocket of B1. So, the Commission felt very... and that's an issue that the Subcommittee has to look at, because you want to control it for every step.
All right. Anybody, anything else? All right, Mr. Solley, your first challenge is to get together with staff and get this permitting situation resolved.
We will do that first.
I know that might not involve you necessarily, but it does involve your client, so...
Yes.
You're the messenger.
Yep, understood.
That has to be resolved immediately.
Okay. All right, and then we'll work with staff to see when the next Regulation Subcommittee may be, and we can come in and talk a little bit further.
Great.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to public hearings. Instructions for the audience. There are two sets of microphones for both public address and recording of the proceedings. Due to the need for recording, it is important to stand at the microphone at all times and speak into it loudly and clearly in order that everyone in the room can hear and to capture what is being said. Individuals speaking from the seats will not be heard and will not be recognized to speak. Order of the Hearing of an Application. Points of order and responses will be entertained. Exhibits will be read for the record. Applicant and/or representatives will present the application and will answer Commission questions. The floor will be open to those in favor. The floor will be open to those opposed. The floor will be open to general comments or questions. The floor will be open to the applicant, who may take the opportunity for closing remarks or rebuttal, after which discussion will close. The applicant or his representatives are the final speakers. No comments shall be accepted from anyone unless recognized by the Chair. All questions and comments shall be addressed to the Chair, who will determine if an answer shall be provided and by whom. There shall be absolutely no discussion between speakers and audience. Commission has no intention to limit the right of any person to speak, but asks that speakers try not to be repetitive. Please try to present new information. If something has been said before, the commission would invite you to indicate your agreement with previous speakers. At no time shall there be displays of emotion such as applause, cheering, shouting, or similar noise. This is critical as this hearing is being recorded. If this happens, you will be cautioned. A vote or demonstration by a show of hands, standing by the audience, or similar action will not be recognized. All parties are requested not to talk between themselves while the hearing is in progress. If you feel a need to talk, please step out into the lobby. All speakers, when recognized, must advance to the microphone to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. The chairman reserves the right to cut off discussion if it is not relevant to the application or is presented in an inappropriate manner. This is a legal proceeding, much the same as what would occur in a courtroom setting. We request that all parties observe the proper decorum that would be observed in that setting. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. If you have a need to use these devices, please leave the room and use them outside. All right, first up. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chamber, Seventh Van Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven PM or soon thereafter, concerning the following. Five dash ninety-three dash S dash A one, file number one-two-two-six A, five thirty-seven Monroe Turnpike. Application for special exception permit, permit approval, amendment modification to permit a pet grooming business consisting of a customer self-service pet animal washing station within the confines of an existing retail pet store. Applicant Anthony Beltrone, Choice Pet Supply, owner of one-eleventh Century Plaza LLC, David B. Siffen, member. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in the Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices.
Um, Will, what do we have for exhibit?
Exhibit one, permit approval amendment modification application with attachments. Exhibit two, project narrative. Exhibit three, AOT comments on planning and zoning. Exhibit four, butter's list with certified mail receipts and green cards. That is all.
Do we have someone for the applicant? Name an address for the record, please.
My name's Tony Beltrone. Uh, my address is, you want a business address?
Business address is fine.
So it's five thirty-five Monroe Turnpike. If you guys have any questions, it's pretty straightforward. Yeah, so they submitted all the paperwork, and it's basically just two, uh, self-service stations within the, uh, the retail space. Free to customers. Uh, it's really just a, an added service for the, for the customers to draw along to the, uh, location.
Can you just explain where it is in the store, how it operates?
Yeah, so we got it in the back corner of the store. It's sixteen by eight. Um, it basically is just two self-service tubs, um, just like you would use at home bathtubs. Um, so you have your own bays for each of the animals. Um, pretty short, uh, short usage, too. I mean, you're looking at maybe five minutes per, per wash for each of the animals. And then we have some, uh, dryers in there as well, so, you know, they're washing and then drying the animals afterwards. Pretty self-sufficient. The staff will clean up afterwards, and, uh, yeah, pretty quick and painless.
So the, the, the pet owner?
Pet owner comes in, yeah, we offer all the supplies. Yeah, so we got the shampoos, the tubs, the dryers, everything's there for them to use. And they don't have to worry about cleaning, you know, we do the cleaning for them.
Any questions?
Yeah, is it other locations?
Yeah, we did it last, uh, July. We opened it in our Fairfield location.
It's been good.
Yeah, doing well.
How much did you say it was?
What's that?
How much did you say it was?
Free to members. But basically, we haven't charged anybody for it, so, yeah, free to all. As long as they're a member in our system, uh, they're part of our free-to-buy program. Come in and bathe the dog. It's really, it's just to draw them into the store, and, you know, just an extra service for the customers.
I'll definitely draw them in, cause I go down to Trumbull by myself.
Yeah, exactly.
Anything from the Health Department? Did you talk to them?
Um, yeah, I mean, the, the Department of Ag came in, too, when we launched it in Fairfield. Um, they just approached us about getting the grooming facility permit, but nothing with the Department of Health.
Yeah, did you reach out to the town of Monroe Department of Health?
Um, personally, we did not. I'm not too sure if that was something we.
No, they did talk with the Health Department, and I had some conversation with them. You know, obviously, water usage is an issue, but it wasn't with facilities, so it's adequate.
That's all.
Okay, I, I really have no questions, but, you know, this is a public hearing, so if you wanna just have a seat, we'll see if anyone here in the audience has any comments. Okay, is there anyone here who, uh, would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any general questions or comments? Back to you, sir.
He's wanting to suggest to close and look favorably upon the application.
Oh, yeah, no, I just appreciate the, the time, and, uh, yeah, we're just looking to get the approval on the, uh, the permit and, uh, move forward with the vows.
Does the Ag Department require approval, or they just need you to show?
I believe we needed you guys to sign off to, uh, get the, uh, the, the permit from them.
Anything else?
Close.
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 Hearing's closed. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up. In accordance with section four thirty dash five D of chapter four thirty, scenic roads, the code of the town of Monroe, Connecticut General Statute eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chambers, Seventh Van Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven PM or soon thereafter, concerning the following. SRA dash two thousand nineteen dash zero one, file number one zero one N two ninety-six Garter Road. Chapter four thirty, scenic roads, application pursuant to section four thirty dash five D for alteration and improvement related to the construction of a new single-family residence with driveway accessing Garter Road, designated scenic road. Owner, applicant Janet DeCarlo. Complete details associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in the Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices. We have for exhibits, Will.
Exhibit one, scenic road application with attachment. Exhibit two, a butter's list. Exhibit three, pictures of street line. Exhibit four, street line tree map. Exhibit five, site plan set. Exhibit six, uh, conservation easement instrument. Exhibit seven, one twenty-eight. Exhibit eight, IWC notice of a decision. Exhibit nine, notarized statement of intent to construct. Exhibit ten corresponds first select one regarding the conservation easement. Exhibit eleven corresponds from the first select one regarding the conservation easement. Exhibit twelve, email corresponds first level regarding the conservation easement. And exhibit thirteen corresponds to manager for driveway curb cut. Exhibit fourteen, uh, updated site plan. Exhibit fifteen, AOT comments from the billing department. Exhibit sixteen, AOT comments from engineering. And exhibit seventeen, AOT comments from eighteen Z. Do you have notices and?
That's it?
Copies of the notice, that's it, except for I need copies of the notices. And I'll make that exhibit eighteen. Thank you.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay. We have for the applicant.
Uh, my name is, uh, Michael Imichal, Lance Chevere with the firm of the House Committee, Imichal Kane. I'm here representing, uh, Janet DeCarlo. Um, I'm, we're here tonight for, um, proposal for a single-family home on an existing two-acre vacant lot that was approved by the subdivision in two thousand and four. Uh, Gardner Road was, um, designated as scenic road in two thousand and six. And what we're here for tonight is, um, to propose driveway entrance onto Gardner Road.
You can operate with the mouse if you want.
As you can see, this is the entrance here into a proposed four-bedroom house.
Your set should be, I don't know if you can scroll, it's four drawings, so if you go to the blue arrow at the top, you scroll through them.
All right, this is overall of, of the whole site. Uh, at the rear of the property, also, through the subdivision, they designated that back area as a conservation easement, so that's, it's gonna stay at natural state forever. The proposal here, we'll go back to the other one. There's gonna be some grading in this area here for the driveway. Some, there's no significant trees in that area there. From this area over here, all the way over here, this is all gonna maintain as a natural state. I do have, um, there was comments by your town, by, uh, Bill.
I think this is an older plan, cause didn't you make a revision that got rid of this?
Yeah, there's a.
Utilities to here. So the only break in the road. Focus on the scenic road part of it. The only break is really what's needed in this area for.
That's correct.
For the driveway and the utility will come up through here.
Right.
Rather than through here, so that swath can stay.
That's correct.
And there's a, approximately a fifty-two foot separation from the road, from the property line to the septic system. And the house is twice, you know, twice that distance back.
And what are you proposing for the material for the driveway apron?
Since that last, we had, originally was gonna be all by tumors, but since we're on, it's part of the regulations for the scenic road, we're just gonna make that, the apron, uh, rather. Just a gravelly apron.
I gave you a report because it's a scenic road, which is a little bit different format. So you're gonna do a situation where the road is, um, you've got a gravel situation, and so, you know, what are we doing?
Yeah, well, I, exactly the question.
Yeah.
What are some of the other driveways in that area?
Well, um.
They're all paved, gravel.
So, the only purpose would be to, you know, anti-tracking.
Can you track dirt onto a dirt road?
That's what I'm saying. So, um, I didn't see, other, other than maybe, uh, establishing conditions that are gonna be a little bit more stable. So I really didn't go after that. And to me, it just seemed like, um, just what you said, you know, like.
So you're, you're proposing gravel on the, on the street side of the street line, and you're gonna pave it from the street line in?
Correct.
Do you have any, you didn't have any photos, did you, of the area?
Yeah.
Photos of the street, of the asphalt.
What right out? Well, there's what right out?
Well, if the apron was paved, the plows would take it out.
Oh, yeah.
There's no sense paving out into the gravel.
Right, right.
Every time they grade it. So what I did, and just for the rest of you, in this case, um, your regular, the town code requires that I provide you with a report. So my comments, one through four, which are normally comments about things they need to do, th- those comments are more along the lines of a, of a quote to you as to whether it's appropriate what he's submitting to you. So, just to, um, clarify, those were all positive, um, comments I was giving you as to report in this case. I spent some time with his engineer and had some changes made, such as the one you just talked about, where they eliminated the utility going through the front yard, moved that over to the driveway, uh, minimized the grading, did some things to kinda, um, maintain the, the scenic quality.
Okay. Do you have anything else as part of your?
I just wanna make things to that. We're not gonna be changing any of the road grades or anything like that. Everything's staying the same, you know? Everything's gonna be right to it, you know? We're not changing that road at all, so, alignment or what have you.
Okay.
You know, we're gonna keep it as natural as it is.
Ryan? No questions?
Okay.
No questions.
No questions. No questions.
Okay, let's see if anyone from the public has anything they wanna ask or comment on. Is anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the application?
Uh, Dan Kunkel, uh, twenty-eight Garter Road. So I, I live right next door. I, and I wanted to clarify that some of these, the driveways on Garter Road, there's a mixture of both asphalt and gravel. My driveway is grau- is asphalt. Uh, the one right next to me is gravel.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone would like to speak in opposition to the application? Any general questions or comments? Back to you, sir.
I, I have no further comment.
Anything else from staff? There were some notations, um, in the comments about signage required along the conservation easement. Uh, you're, you're in agreement with that?
Yes. Actually, we, um, I have plans that we revise all the comments from Scott and, and Bill also. I asked, but I know we can't submit every foot, but we did address those comments that were done.
All right, we'll just run, we'll run through this quick. Your, your paving is gonna stop at the street line.
Right.
Separation distance of the water supply from the septic.
Correct.
You have a hundred feet.
Hundred feet, right.
You took care of the tree buffer on the plant.
That's correct.
And then the signs every fifty feet along the conservation.
Definitely a fifty-foot, uh, inch of those.
Anything else? Staff?
Nope.
Close it.
Close it. Thank you. Seven fifty. Okay, next up, we have SEP two thousand nineteen dash oh five, file number one-six-one-three A, Seventy-four Enterprise Drive, Assessor Map ninety-four, lot fifteen through thirteen, Industrial District Two. Special exception permit to modify the standing-approved site plan related to phase one and phase two buildings and site improvements, as well as new special exception permits for the following proposed uses. Landscaper, commercial vehicle facility, and automobile service shop, including approval of undertenant uses of the phase one and phase two buildings. This is a hearing reconvened from June twentieth. Uh, Will, any new exhibits?
Yes, exhibit fifteen, AOT comments by engineering. Exhibit sixteen, automotive repair insurance setup plan by the applicant. Exhibit seventeen, certified mail receipt to the aquarium and Department of Public Health. Exhibit eighteen, amendment to Wetland's approval. Exhibit nineteen, updated, uh, AOT comments on the zoning. And exhibit twenty, updated AOT comments on engineering with bond recommendation. That is all. Okay, for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Bjorklund, I'm president of the firm, Spaff Bjorklund Associates. We have offices here in Monroe, and I'm a professional engineer registered in the state of Connecticut. As was mentioned, this is a reconvened hearing from June, and, uh, I believe that we left, uh, the hearing in June, uh, with a couple of things that needed to be done. Uh, one was that we needed to get our Hill and Wetlands approval, and that has been obtained, and that is, Will indicated that is part of the record. Uh, and the other thing that had been requested by the commission was that we submit a floor plan of the automotive repair facility, which has been done, and I believe the commission has that in their possession. Uh, the other thing that has, uh, come up, uh, was that I received this afternoon, uh, additional, the, uh, review comments from both the town engineer and the town planner. Uh, I did have a chance to go through them. Uh, I don't think that there's anything here that we have any objection to. Uh, I look at these primarily as, uh, housekeeping items. I look at these primarily as housekeeping items, and I don't think that we need any more discussion, unless staff has some comments or questions that they would like to ask of me. I think the only thing that I would like to bring up is a bond that has been recommended by the town engineer. We had a similar situation at last month's meeting on a different application. Originally, Mike Infante of the owner posted a $5,000 bond within the Wetlands for site restoration back in 2007. That bond is still in place, and the recommendation of the town engineer for the bond, for this bond, was for $22,000.
Dave, excuse me one minute, we got to leave that door open. I'm sorry.
No, not a problem. So what we have is we have two bonds that overlap each other. We had the same situation back in June on another application. So I think that they're, to a degree, they're redundant, and in the site restoration, part of the bond is already covered by the Wetlands bond. So what I was going to ask the commission is that we reduce the bond, this bond down to $15,000, seeing as it's covered, if we need an intro from the town engineer in regards to that.
The bonds are not overlapping in this case, what I did is, if you look in the bond form, the area that I utilized for the topsoil acid fertilizing, in other words, that's the total area of disturbance. That's 40,000 square feet. What I did was I subtracted the area of the upwind review area. So I took the Wetlands regulated area out of that when I figured it out, so there wouldn't be an overlap. But as I indicated to the commission too, remember, you're two different commissions, you have two different programs for bonds. I don't believe there is such a thing as an overlap on bonding. There are many times when you will be bonding for the same work, because you're two different commissions and it goes through a different legal process to reduce the bonds. But what I, or release the bond, but what I try to do is I do try to massage the bond in a way that we kind of try to avoid some overlap, and that's what I did in this case.
I didn't see your note here.
Yeah, see that, where I crossed it off?
Yes, the cross off doesn't show on the copy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's, I didn't actually cross it off, but if you see the, and yours probably doesn't show as well because it's a Xerox copy, but...
It doesn't.
Yeah, so number three, see where you got 5675?
Right.
And then down below it says 40?
Yes.
So I took the 10,000 square feet off.
So the engineer's bond recommendation is 22,000?
Yes. Other than that, if the commission has any questions or staff, I'll be glad to answer them.
No questions.
No questions.
No questions. Just on your plan here, you have a 75-gallon waste oil tank?
Yes.
It's got to be 275.
Pardon?
Has to be 275.
Okay.
That's, that's state regulation.
Okay.
Dave, I have a question for you, just because I was talking to you about... I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And I didn't go yet.
Scott's line show today.
I couldn't hear you, to be honest.
I have, maybe either a question or a clarification concerning the site, overall site plan and grading for Phase 2. You have provided a compilation plan that illustrates what was originally proposed and approved versus what was actually built.
Right.
And they're not exactly the same.
No.
There's some differences throughout the entire site. But your site plan for Phase 2, we'll call it, for the future building, you have the originally approved site plan. So if I were just to look at this plan, I would be led to believe that you're going to go in and redo everything to meet the originally approved drawing, because that's what you're, that's what you're submitting for Phase 2. If you're, if you're intending to leave all the existing riprapping grading as is, I think that should be reflected on your Phase 2 drawing.
What he's saying is that in the areas that you know about, the riprap where you're proposing to keep, you kind of have to put it on this plan as, as proposed.
Is, is what you're planning to do for Phase 2, even though it's there, but you're retroactive proposing.
Okay, I understand that, it's a little unusual, but yeah, I understand that.
Well, it's not unusual, because at the end of the day, when we look at the, at the approved plan for Phase 2, it's going to line up with what's actually happened, has been built. And, you know, when you're looking for a final sign law, the site conditions don't match the approved plan, you're going to have a problem down the road. It would be better to get those revisions onto your Phase 2 map, so that we can approve them as they're built now.
I understand that.
That was my only comment.
All right, Scott, your turn.
I feel I'm sorry. Just, it was actually for clarification, because I was dealing with Bill from your office.
Right.
Some of these items, and one of my comments was that a retaining wall in the front corner, and I think Bill had mentioned to me that he didn't want to do the retaining wall, but he wanted to go a little steeper with the riprap sloping. So I thought I'd bring that up, because the commission would have to accept that, because the slop... What I'm saying is, in the front of the building, they want to widen the driveway out a little bit, and there's already a slope there, so the slope is already at the maximum percent that you allow. So what I'm saying is that you have to put a retaining wall in to be able to do that widening. But what they want to do, I think, from what Bill told me, is they want to not put the retaining wall in and go steeper than the two-to-one slope in that area by armory, putting a surface coat of riprap on to match the rest of the slope. I know that zoning had an issue, brought up that as an issue. So I thought I'd just bring that up so you guys can decide what you want to do about it, if any.
Yeah, I think this is going to be a very small area.
It is, yeah, it's small.
Which plan would show, SP 1?
Uh, this is SP 1.
The grading plan would show.
Right, over the...
The grading plan?
Yeah.
Oh, SP 1 is the grading plan? Where are you talking about, in the front?
Yeah, north, the northwest corner of the building.
Right, oh, okay.
Of the building, at the...
Yeah, right about there.
I want to zoom in.
Yeah, see how the driveway cuts into the riprap slope? Well, that riprap slope is already at the maximum. So what I'm saying is, if they cut into the slope, they're going to have to put a retaining wall. Or chase the slope and put a steeper slope.
Well, I don't know, that might not be what we're looking for. Are you sure it's not steeper? I don't think it's that steep.
Well, it's hard, if you blow it up a little more, it's hard to see the contours there, but the contours, I think, are behind those slopes.
Yeah, they're, they're underneath, they're in the gray layer. This is, I mean, from end to end, where it goes zero to zero, it's about 80, 80 feet. The area right, this, this is the area that we're talking about, right here.
So I guess what I need to know is, are you, would you guys accept the slope being steeper than your required two-to-one slope? Would you accept that, because I'll just work with them to do that? Or if it ends up being steeper than the two-to-one slope, do you want him to put a, you know, it's just going to be a little cheek wall, but do you want him to put a little cheek wall along the edge of the driveway to make up that difference?
How far are you going into the slope?
That, we are going, the road widening at its worst point is four feet.
And how long, how long is the distance from the beginning of the slope all the way to...
Well, from the beginning all the way to the end, but I don't think that's going...
No, from where you start going into the riprap slope to the end where you go into?
Yeah, I don't think, Scott, let me know if you, I, I don't think we're, this is going to make any difference down here, I think, where we get to where...
Yeah, like in that part, you could probably just do a high curve.
Yeah.
High curve, or, you know, lay some, lay some big riprap along there and...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so if you guys are okay with that, I'll just work with it.
I don't really think, I mean, the topo was the topo, but when you go out there, it's not as steep as you think.
It's not as steep.
Yeah, nobody's going to be walking in this area.
No, but it wasn't, it really wasn't that bad, and it wasn't that deep, did it?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if they were going to give me the flexibility to do that, so I'm, I'm fine with that.
I mean, comparison to 17 Enterprises is very different.
I'm sure this has been was done to relative standards, so that wall should be correctly placed on the drawing, but, you know, I think, I think we can work with what's there.
Yeah, this is, this is going to be, if we took a couple of big pieces of riprap, we're just breaking...
On a high curve.
Yes.
I don't see a big issue.
All right, and my only other comment was, just for the commission's benefit, I did provide a development status report in a situation like this where they're not done with the original, and this report lists to you what items are not finished. Inland Wetlands approved it, but wanted them to complete some of the pavement in the area in the back where they're, current, they had some storage and some restoration work to do. They have expressed some concerns about putting pavement in initially before they do this work, and then having to go back, you know, getting it ripped up or whatever. My comment to that is, put in a binder, put the binder in, and then get on with the building of your addition, and then they have to...
So you're talking about this whole area behind the bed?
Yeah, behind the building. Wetlands wanted that done sooner than later, because right now it's loading and it's going over the top of slope down into the wetlands. So, but aside from that, I gave you the...
That's something that your, your client would be agreeable to?
Well, we've, we've asked Inland Wetlands to modify that, and we were going to also, after discussing it the other day, we were going to propose something at the next Wetlands meeting of placing a binder all along here, coming out about three feet from the edge, because the water is, is coming over the slope. Making sure that we put in a binder and a curb, so making sure that it gets to that catch basin is what we're going to offer. Rather than, rather than putting even a binder down in this area, when we build a new building, we're only going to lose the binder, but I, I think the intent is, is that we get the runoff into the catch basin from the parking lot.
Well, you should probably only lose the binder four or five feet out from the building, from the new building, unless the, the binder should remain intact.
Yeah.
You know, with having that whole back lot just gravel, there's going to be a continual washout down there.
Well, that's what we were proposing, was to put a binder here at the down, down slope side, and make sure and grade it in a fashion that it gets to those catch basins.
Right, but the gravel is just going to wash over that three-foot binder and end up in the sump of that basin, and if that's not maintained, it's just going to there, go right out into the wetlands.
And your big washout is happening right now.
Or if you put a silk, if you put a silk sack in the basin, it's just going to overwash the top of the basin. I think Wetlands has a good point that there's considerable erosion issues there. So I, I think that we would be inclined to say that at least get a binder down on that back lot. If, if Inland Wetlands gives you a wave around that, we'll defer to them, but...
I think that's reasonable.
That's everybody's temporary obstruction.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not permanent paving. We are planning on paving the parking lot ultimately.
And binder, not, not milling.
Right.
That's it, I'm all set.
Well...
Clarification, right now in the back, there were Jersey barriers there, the old plan, those are gone?
Pardon?
The last time I was on the site was about a month ago, and this was all aligned with Jersey barriers. Plan is obviously to put the curb in as a drainage, but the Jersey barriers coming out, in the ultimate plan?
Yes, and there's, there's no material in front of those and hay bales in front of those.
Right, I understand that.
No, they were temporary.
Okay, I had a couple of other quick questions concerning the proposed schedule that was provided. Where do we stand with some of the milestones that were spelled out in your narrative? You know, we're, we're up to July 18th already. We had certain items that were in your narrative that were going to be completed by now. I've not located that list yet, but... It's on page 11 of your, of this packet. Between June 20th and June 27th, the hay bales, the Jersey barriers, we'll just say that those are in. June 19th to July 15th, continue with the eviction of the landscaping company that's refused to move their unregistered vehicles off the site, what's the status of that?
Are you into that?
Yeah. Just come up and name and rec, name an address for the record, please.
My name is Mike Infante, 29 Vintage Road, Turnbull, Connecticut. As far as the landscaper, he began moving all his equipment and things out. He's now renting, saw a place in Pepper Street, I don't know where, but he's got everything, all his equipment that he had lined up in front of the Jersey barriers and whatnot, behind the building, they're all gone. The two unregistered vehicles, they're still there. He told me definitely they will be out by mid next week. He's got better than half of everything that he's got on the inside of the building that he, you know, was leasing. That's been removed. So I would venture to say that the end of next week, they'll be completely out of there.
Okay, and then there was the, between June 20th and July 15th, consolidate existing outdoor storage of trucks, trailers, and other items to parking lot on northeast side of new building.
That, that we've started to do, we started to put the remaining items in that, that area that he proposed.
Right, that new parking lot, what's the status of that?
Right. That's, that's where, that's where everything is being moved to, that's...
I understand, has it been moved?
Yes, it's almost full.
It's all been moved, okay.
It's almost full.
Okay.
And Mike, that's only stuff related to tenants that are on the premises, correct?
I'm sorry, sorry.
All that stuff is only related to tenants or yourself on the premises, correct?
I've not quite followed that.
The area you're consolidating, all that stuff?
Right.
And the things that are there?
Yeah.
Relate or belong to only to tenants that are on the premises, doesn't relate to any non-building tenants?
No, no, just the tenants that are, present the tenants.
Because then everything's pretty much on track?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Anything else? Nope, all right, let's open it to the floor. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Any general questions or comments? Back to you, Dave. Back to you, Dave.
I have no further comments. I thank you for your consideration.
What do you think?
Close it.
Any reading of not closing hearing? You're satisfied with condition on all the stuff that's up to you? Yep. Good. Here it's closed, 8:13. Okay, item number nine, SEP 2019-06, file number 1614A8 Maple Drive. We have a letter for R E M Enterprises. Dear Mr. Agresta, this letter will serve as our request to defer our client's above referenced application to the Planning and Zoning Commission regular hearing date of August 15th, 2019. We hereby waive any statutory timeframe for opening and closing a public hearing. The applicant requires additional time to address the comments of the zoning staff. So.
But it's not, the agenda said August 1st. We were not aware that they wanted to skip to the second meeting, so that's, your letter does say August 15th.
Okay, so. This is being postponed to August 15th. All right, five-minute recess. 8:14. Okay, all right, 8:23, back in session. Next up, item number 10, R A A 2019-05, file number 1006E, zoning regulation text amendment, proposed business three. Applicant proposed zoning text amendment petition seeking the establishment of a new but unmapped retail-oriented business district three with associated lot and bulk standards and principal and accessory uses. Adjourned from 5:1619, postponed by the applicant to 7:1819. Well, any new exhibits?
Exhibit 14, time extension letter from the applicant. Exhibit 15, time extension letter from the applicant. Exhibit 16, response to comments by the applicant. Exhibit 17, red line version to regulation amendments. And exhibit 18, revised regulation amendments proposed by the applicant. That is all.
Okay, and for the record, the seated alternates were here the night of the first public hearing. For the applicant.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering. Also with, with me here this evening is Robert Pearson, our land use counsel with Alter Pearson, I'm representative for the applicant's team, and also Rufus Chambers, a representative for the ownership group of the property. One housekeeping item, in our response to the comments, the commission read through that, we actually referenced that we had attached some information regarding, um, available spaces in town. We inadvertently forgot to attach that, so I wanted to submit that to the, for the record. We'll be reviewing that as part of our, um, presentation this evening and reviewing our response to the comments in detail, but I wanted to make sure the commission had that. So, again, so we're here this evening for continuation of the public hearing for a regulation amendment to establish a new B3 zoning district in the town of Monroe. So just, uh, the town of Monroe zoning, zoning map currently with, um, current zoning districts, and again, we propose a regulation to establish a new, uh, district. First, I want to run through all of the, uh, regulation changes that we've made since our last public hearing, both in response to staff comments and the discussion of the last hearing, and then we'll go through the response to comments in detail. So, we made some minor modifications to the definitions proposed from a zoning term standpoint. Section 2.2.1, we modified the definition of commercial long-term parking to just be commercial parking. Any lot, land, parcel, building, or structure used for the temporary storage or parking of trucks, commercial vehicles, tractor, trailers, boats, or RVs. We eliminated construction equipment or parts thereof, um, and we eliminated the reference to, uh, leasing, um, you know, lease agreements for certain periods of time, as there is some confusion regarding the enforcement of that. The next definition, indoor cultivation facility, the inside vertical and horizontal growing of crops excluding marijuana by method of conventional horticulture, hydroponics or aquaponics, including the storing, processing, and sale of agricultural and horticultural products and commodities originating from your property where said activities occur, except as may otherwise be permitted by these regulations. And then power generation and commercial utility facility, we have deleted that definition as we are no longer proposing that as a use to be contemplated in the B3 district. Accessory uses, uh, we modified 4.13D3 to put a limit on the potential outdoor storage which could be proposed in the B3 district. We added, uh, the outdoor storage area shall not exceed 20% of the gross floor area of the principal building, with the exception of parcels in the B3 district, which will be limited to 30% of the gross lot area. That area was calculated based on, um, historical outdoor storage areas that was applied to a specific property, the Stevenson Lumber property, which we're gonna talk through in a little more detail. 4.3, the B3 district, this, this language as previously proposed remains the same. On the schedule of dimensional requirements, we made a modification to increase the minimum yard at a residential zone boundary from 50 to 100 feet in response to staff and commission comments. We also just clarified the note at the bottom that each lot shall be of such shape that a square 250 feet on each side can be placed entirely within the lot lines with one side parallel to the street lot. So we just made clarification there. For 4.35 landscape and screening, we eliminated the ability for canopies over pump islands and adjacent areas utilized to fuel vehicles at gasoline service stations. We eliminated that as something permitted in the, the setbacks. This is the current language in the B2 district, which permitted those canopies to be in a setback. We discussed that at the hearing. There is a comment from staff, so we eliminated that exception in the B3 district. You know, I think that was something the commission had previously considered only for B2 properties. We also amended, uh, section 8.2.3, the supplemental standards, to create and establish supplemental standards for the two uses, the two new uses we're proposing for the B3 zone. So, for P, adding, uh, P, commercial parking, all vehicles or trailers parked on the premises shall be registered with the State Department of Motor Vehicles. Number two, landscape screening shall be provided between the commercial parking and any road or residential structure. If it can be demonstrated that existing site topography makes the commercial parking impossible to see, the commission may allow the elimination of the landscape screening buffer in those areas. Number three, site shall have direct access to a state highway. Number four, no maintenance or repair shall be performed on any vehicle, boat, RV, or trailer within the area designated as commercial parking. And then for indoor cultivation facility, proposing item O. Number one, a chemical and fertilizer management plan shall be provided to the commission detailing the receipt, use, storage, and disposal of any chemicals used in connection with the indoor cultivation facility. And two, a water management plan shall be provided to the commission detailing the use, storage, recycling, and disposal of processed water used in connection with the indoor cultivation facility. So, we wanted to provide a response and add these additional supplemental standards. And then, we amended the, uh, section 10.1, scheduled permitted uses. Uh, you can see again, the B3 district, we added this column here for including the SEP uses, what we did.
Let's back up. You skipped over the frontages on page 14. We have a whole new section B.
Oh, shoot, you're absolutely correct. Thank you for, for touching that. My apologies for excluding the presentation. Yes, um, so, zoom in here. We added note B under. Actually, you know what? This was actually, this has to do with frontages in the I-2 and I-3. I think this actually is, this is the current regulation. This isn't something we're proposing to change. I think it was tracked as a red line in that document because it may not, it may have been inadvertently left out from the last iteration of what was submitted. But this isn't new language that we're proposing that isn't currently in the regulations. I think just, you know, we, we submitted a couple of documents for the commission's consideration, obviously a clean, um, amendment application, and then we did include a red line so the commission could see the tracked changes as we went. I think that was a tracked change that shouldn't have been shown as tracked.
Okay.
Sorry about that. But thank you for, for. Okay. Threw me off. Let's get back to it. Back to scheduled permitted land use by zoning district again. Um, we did, we eliminated the, uh, I think, well, commercial long-term parking, we just modified the definition of long-term, just say commercial parking instead of proposed use in the B3. I think this is actually just a carryover. That's not swear to the regs, yeah, sorry about that. Power generation, uh, commercial power generation facility, we deleted that as a use. That's no longer something we're proposing for the B3. It is permitted, uh, it's currently permitted in the regulations if it's a public utility. And I think that was actually something that was done after our initial submission, which is maybe. Again, this tavern, this is shown as a tracked change, even though this was something the commission adopted as their own to eliminate tavern. It's just a change from when our initial submission was. Temporary storage of carnival rides, we eliminated this as being a special exception for me use in the B3 district. It remains only a special exception for me use in the B2 district. And that's the summary of the, the changes to the regs. Oh, excuse me. We also modified the proposed parking ratios, or the parking rates for the two uses we're proposing. Commercial parking, one space per 10 commercial parking spaces, a portion thereof. And for indoor cultivation facility, one space per 5,000 square, uh, square feet of gross floor area. So what we did is we eliminated any connection to number of employees, um, as I know that's been difficult to enforce. So, um, as we went through at length at the last hearing, and we'll go through again this evening, we're proposing to add a new zone to the regulations. However, we didn't propose a specific area for that zone. We aren't proposing to create a floating zone or overlay zone. We're creating to establish the B3 district. And then what we presented to the commission is that there's an intent to immediately apply for a zone change for the Stevenson Lumber property if this regulation is adopted. We provided some potential areas where the commission may want to consider doing B3 districts, and we kind of really think it fits into three areas really at the, um, potentially the northern border of Route 25, just south of the town, the new town. Possibly on the southern end of Route 25, but primarily at the location of, um, the former Stevenson Lumber property, which is currently zoned B2. And that's 1585 Monroe Turnpike. Now, the reason we believe that this is such an appropriate zoning designation for this property is because for years, historically, as we discussed, this property operated with essentially the, within the constraints that we're creating for the B3 district. It provided a combination of industrial manufacturing with some retail uses in a B2 district, even though it really operated as an industrial, industrial piece of property. And given its location, its unique, uh, site characteristics, we think that, as we discussed, creating a new zone and applying it to this property really does give the best opportunity for an underdeveloped, for underutilized, um, vacant piece of property to come back on to the, to be a much more productive and active property in the community. So now I'd like to go through, um, our formal response to the comments as we've submitted.
Before you get into that, Kevin, I have one more question on your red line. On the very last page, following the, um, the bulk requirement chart, there's three asterisks. And I see number one and number two called out on the chart, and number three, excluding residentially zoned district boundaries of railroad properties.
Oh, yes.
That's, doesn't show up anywhere on the bulk requirement chart. So what is that?
So, we talked about, um, it actually does show up at, uh, what we talked about was the buffer, the landscape buffer, that would be intentionally, potentially applied from residential zone properties. What we discussed at the last hearing was the particular property at Stevenson Lumber happens to be zoned B2 and adjacent to residential. However, that residential zone boundary lies within the middle of a railroad right-of-way property. So a portion of that railroad right-of-way is zoned residential, a portion of it is zoned, uh, business, and we felt that if we had an, an existing buffer built in for this property where the railroad right-of-way is something that's undeveloped, it acts as a buffer, that the, the residential zone boundary buffer could be applied, should be applied, um, at the far end of that, uh, right-of-way rather than at the zone line itself, if we had additional buffer built in to the width of the right-of-way parcel.
Your loss, Mike.
Okay, let me see if I can, uh, sure. Okay, so on the, um, schedule of area bulk requirements, so we had a minimum yard adjacent to residential districts of 100 feet. However, we wanted to exclude residentially zoned district boundaries of railroad properties. So when you look at the zoning map for the Stevenson Lumber property, which is currently zoned B2, the residential zone boundary bisects the railroad right-of-way property, which is adjacent to this piece. So, what we provided in, as that footnote, was that that 100-foot, that 100-foot buffer would be more appropriately placed outside of the railroad right-of-way. So rather than have it come from the, this residential zone line, which is in the middle of a right-of-way parcel that could be applied to the further property line of that right-of-way parcel. This, this parcel is zoned RF3. This parcel is what really needs and, and requires that additional buffer of 100 feet from residential zone properties. We didn't think that it was, um, necessary to provide that buffer from the center of a railroad right-of-way parcel, when the entire railroad right-of-way parcel acts as a buffer in itself.
So that you're, you're, what this is saying then is that the railroad right-of-way is part of the buffer?
Correct, correct. And if that needs further clarification, we're happy to work with staff and, and, uh, question.
Okay.
So what I'd like to do now is kind of go through our formal response to comments to the town planner's comments. I know we discussed these a little bit at length, but we actually have provided formal responses. His comment number one, uh, the petition narrative indicates the proposed B3 district will provide a needed bridge between business and industrial districts by allowing a mix of complementary industrial and commercial uses, and would provide incentive for development of larger tracts of land. However, the petition does not present any evidence or data supporting. However, the petition does not present any evidence or data supporting that such a need actually exists, much less called for by the POCD. No such recommendation is evident in the POCD future land use plan or recommendations. Nor does the petition assess the compatibility of the mix of business and industrial uses, much less the three new added uses." So I want to talk about the need. So one of the things that we just submitted was a summary of the available commercial spaces in Monroe. And the Economic Development recently had a, held an event at which highlighted to try to encourage economic activity in the community. What it determined was that there are 77 available retail or office spaces in either the business or the LOR district, and there are 12 available industrial districts or industrial spaces in the community. So while Stevenson Lumber has been zoned for B-2 for quite some time, as we've discussed at the last hearing, it essentially has been fallow or inactive since Stevenson Lumber closed operations in 2007, I believe. This is zone B-2. These are available B-2 properties. However, there's been no activity from a retail, commercial, restaurant space. Now, when you look at the overall available commercial spaces in the community, there are 62 developed lots, so essentially second-generation spaces in existing shopping centers or other facilities that have been constructed in other areas of town which are available. There is a glut of available retail and commercial spaces throughout the community. But what there's lacking is available industrial space. And you can see that there's one available industrial space throughout that entire summary provided by the Economic Development Commission. Now, there are vacant lots zoned industrial, but in today's economic climate, it is incredibly cost-intensive to do ground-up development, whether it's commercial, industrial, or even residential. And this existing space in Stevenson Lumber, if, has, there's been interest over the years, however, it's been for industrial-type uses. It's been for uses that were, that would have existed on the property previously when it was Stevenson Lumber. However, when the owners have been approached about possibly moving into one of these facilities, the underlying zoning doesn't allow it because it's zone B-2. So while there's been potential for this property to be reactivated and, you know, brought back up to more productive state, the only uses that have been interested in there have been industrial. And I think that own summary from the Economic Development Commission kind of supports and helps establish that there is in fact a need. So the evidence certainly for the need that, the evidence that the need exists for a bridge between commercial and industrial uses can be seen in many instances in which the commission has that difficulty addressing the needs of an applicant interested in doing business in the town through the application of existing regulations. There is a disconnect between potential business interests and existing regulatory constraints which this regulation can help address, especially given that applications of the B-3 district to any particular site is entirely within the legislative prerogative of the commission. The Stevenson Lumber Company was a prime example of how a combination of retail sales and the manufacturing of trusses, trim, and millwork uses worked in concert with each other to create the productive taxpaying site. Stone Farm at 754 Main Street is another current example of a business which manufactures the products that it sells and does not easily fit within the current regulations. The POCD emphatically states that there is a desire for increased appropriate economic development to reduce the burden on the residential taxpayer. The proposed regulation is not in conflict with the POCD, and we provided a number of other additional elements on how it does comply with the POCD. Comment two, "The narrative indicates that the proposed B-3 district is proposed to address the need for greater diversification of commercial uses to foster the beneficial development of sufficiently sized properties, but provides no data or substantive analysis as to the alleged need or benefits of the proposed new district and mix of traditional retail uses with more intense industrial uses. Notwithstanding the inherent incompatibility of such a free-for-all mix of uses, the proposed three new uses are also questionable as to their commercial benefits to the community." The narrative indicate, the town of Monroe has made known its desire to encourage development and redevelopment to increase the tax base and provide additional opportunities for employment to residents who currently otherwise need to travel to adjacent communities for employment. The B-3 zone provides new, broader opportunities for site owners and developers by providing a larger array of potential uses to improve the likelihood of creating an economically feasible development plan. As with any development, the sponsor is not likely to proceed with plans that are not economically viable. A greater number of allowable uses and the larger allowable lot size, both with regulatory controls as we have provided, will allow him or her to increase the number of possible variations of development to more likely develop a viable project. The addition of these uses does not preclude development along the lines of the existing code, but simply increases the potential for developing by broadening the opportunities for development. That is a good thing, and the commission retains the legislative authority to decide whether a particular site is appropriate for B-3 development. Additionally, with the implementation of our proposed safeguards with the supplemental standards for the two uses we're proposing, we believe that we've built that in. You know, another discussion about the need for this use, there was discussion about commercial parking as a use and whether or not that's really required. What we talked about at length was if, was that there are a number of instances around the community where people have RVs, larger commercial trucks, boats, things like that, parked in their, parked in their, in their sites or on their houses, on their residential lots. There are two locations in the regulations which specifically prohibits and creates a number of other safeguards to prevent that from happening. Article three and accessory use to the residential district, no unregistered vehicles may be parked or stored on the premises. There are requirements for screening of dense foliage or fencing. Recreational vehicles or boats may be parked or stored, but they have to be 100 feet from the property line. Screening is dense foliage or solid fence. Nothing can be parked on lawns. In addition, under the definitions of Article 1, 1.92B, it goes at length to define what a commercial vehicle is. It even provides pictures of what that is, if there's any confusion, and says that there's no, "Commercial vehicle or parts shall be parked or stored on any unimproved lot in any district, and only one is allowed in any residential district." So there's certainly a need for this because as we went through it at the last hearing, and I had the information, we can go through it again, there are countless examples of where this is happening throughout the community, both on residential lots, also on some commercial lots that isn't permitted. So we do believe that there is, that there's in fact a need for this and for the uses that we've proposed. Number three, as commented above, the petition proposes to allow a mix of traditional commercial uses, retail stores, personal service business, shops, restaurants, et cetera, et cetera, with more intense industrial uses, manufacturing, processing and assembly, commercial warehousing, firewood processing, et cetera. Such a mix of uses are inherently incompatible. If a hybrid or transition zone, transition zone is the desired result, then the type of uses permitted should be reflective and aligned with that purpose and focus by allowing only uses from the far end of the business district spectrum and the less intense uses of the industrial district instead of the broader mixing of business and industrial uses as proposed. So the incompatibility of uses is sometimes an issue when multiple parcels with various owners have properties in the same zone and desire an incompatible path to developing their individual properties. The minimum parcel size of 10 acres will limit the number of parcels that could be eligible for the B-3 districts, which reduces the potential problems with incompatibility. When you have a myriad of smaller properties, you can have B-1, B-2, sometimes adjacent to an industrial property. The individual property owners have no interest with how it's going to impact their neighbor. They want to develop their property to have the highest and best commercial use. So if, if I have an opportunity to do something that it could be perceived as noxious from my neighbors, there's very limited that they could do if that proposed use meets the definitions of the regulations. There are, there are screening requirements for individual properties from its neighbors and things like that, but ultimately, each property owner could do whatever they, whatever they'd like as long as it complies with the regs. When you have a larger property that's going to be developed under one umbrella, the economic interests are aligned. They're not going to propose a use that's going to be noxious and prevent them from using another portion of the property because it's not in their economic best interest. There's, there's no, there's no benefit from them to do something on one corner that's going to eliminate the ability to do something on another piece of the property. So, so I think that inherent incompatibility is actually protected when you have something, in this instance, on a larger property than how it could be, how the land use process and site towns can be developed throughout the community when that doesn't exist. You know, and again, we actually eliminated a number of uses from the proposed regulations thereof, and the elimination of the power generation and commercial utility facility has been eliminated in its entirety. And again, we also removed temporary storage or carnival rides and canopies over pump islands from this district as well. "The petition does not include any correspondingly proposed map locations for the new B-3 district except noting the potential for the former Stevenson Lumber B-2 district property. Without such, it is difficult to fully evaluate or determine the adequacy of the proposed underlying lot area in bulk standards or permitted principle and accessory uses of the new B-3 districts." So the narrative of the regulation amendment and the conformity of the 2010 POCD documents provided, that we've provided with the application, state that the priority growth districts, the Lake Zor Stevenson area and large tracts of non-residential land near these primary corridors are underutilized areas that would benefit from the creation of a B-3 district. In addition, a map was presented at the hearing, and again this evening, that shows why we believe this property in particular is appropriate, and there may be other properties the commission may want to consider. But again, the commission has full legislative authority over what gets reviewed and approved. So this isn't a situation where if the commission adopts this, there's a chance this could pop up anywhere because the commission has the ability to approve any individual zone change application. And as we've testified, this commission does approve this regulation amendment, a zone change for the Stevenson Lumber property will be forthcoming. Number five, "In addition to not including any specific map locations for the proposed new B-3 district, the petition also fails to include specific land use criteria to be applied by the commission in establishing and evaluating the adequacy of any future proposed location for the new zoning district classification. For instance, considerations of the following should be incorporated through the establishment of specific locations criteria: connectivity and availability to transportation, utility and public infrastructure, physical characteristics to ensure B-3 district's use will not interfere with uses on abutting lands, desirability and physical attributes acceptable to accommodating intended B-3 district development, environmental soundness and compatibility of the property to be zoned, consideration of avoidance strategies regarding sensitive natural features, historic and cultural resources, and residential neighboring uses, location parameters such that adequate provision is made for transition minimizing and avoiding detriments to property values, loss of utility or amenity along the boundaries of the new zone where its borders are more upon or more restricted." So United General Statute, section 8.2, applies to the rezoning of any parcel of land and contains an extensive list of considerations to be weighed in a commission's rezoning decision. Providing standards within the regulation itself could limit the authority of the commission. In deciding whether a parcel should be changed to a B-3 zone, the applicant must prove to the commission that the parcel to be rezoned would adequately address all the items above as well as consistency with the POCD. So again, the commission holds all the cards. The commission in itself has the ability to control and evaluate any individual application on its own merit. So rather than create all these additional standards which don't exist for any other use in the regulations, we think it's best for the commission to evaluate that in accordance with general statutes and the powers bestowed to you. Number six, "The petition does not provide any corresponding real estate assessment or evaluation as to the veracity, desirability, demand, or resulting economic benefits or incentives of the proposed new B-3 district or, or claims of resulting commercial benefits producing meaningful improved economic development opportunities over that presently available. As such, there is no correlating analysis supporting the petition's claims of consistency with the POCD. Commercial development is substantially market-driven, and zoning, when used as an economic driver, needs to respond to the prevailing market demands. If there is no underlying market demand, zoning will not create it." The most important statement in any of the documents provided to you is that last sentence. "Commercial development is substantially market-driven, and zoning, when used as an economic driver, needs to respond to prevailing market demands. If there's no underlying market demand, zoning will not create it." This property is, the Stevenson Lumber property has been zoned B-2 since the last operators left the property. Its location in the community, its, its traffic along Route 34 and Monroe Turnpike, the uses that are allowed on the property, there is no market demand for. That's why that property is laid fallow. The, this commission has had several applications come before or informal discussions about possible uses there, but nothing has materialized. What we're proposing in the establishment of the B-3 district, which could be applied to this property, gives, gives an opportunity for some other uses that there's a market for, that there's interest of, that this property has been used for in the past. It creates that opportunity for market factors to actually result in the reactivation of this property. You know, in the town of Monroe, there is a glut of B-2 zone retail and office space on the market. Rents on existing retail and office space continue to drop across Monroe, which hampers the development of any new project. The Stevenson Lumber property is a prime example of a property well-suited for the B-3 zone and for, is currently zoned B-2 and has been vacant for 12 years. There is extremely limited underlying market demand for the B-2 properties. We believe the market is asking for something different, which worked successfully here before, and we feel it will work well to satisfy demand of the market we have before us. And we have attached to you that list of retail spaces and we provided that summary here this evening. The three new commercial uses are, number seven, from Will's comments, "The three new commercial uses are each proposed to be permitted in the new B-3 district subject to a commission's special exception permit. However, no corresponding use-specific supplemental standards are proposed. This would be added to zoning 8.2.3. Use-specific supplemental standards are an integral zoning component of a special exception permit used to ensure their compatibility with the location and other B-3 district, district permitted uses that do not require a special exception permit, thus avoiding conflicts within the district and on surrounding lands outside the district." So we provided supplemental standards for the, for the proposed regulation for the commercial parking and the indoor cultivation facility. We've removed the power generation and commercial utility facility. "It is unclear how a parking lot would provide incentive for increased economic development or would help attract additional economic development investment to an area of robbery. In several ways, it has the potential to do the opposite. We strongly disagree with that statement. Economic development comes in various forms. Commercial parking will attract affluent consumers and businesses with excess personal property in need of storage. The community benefits from these consumers shopping and eating out room to the facility. There may also be a benefit to the town in the form of personal property tax revenue. If each parking space contains $30,000 worth of personal property, which is located on-site for six months or more, it would add $3.3 million to the grand list for 110 parking spaces. The tax revenue from the personal property would be $80,000. The, the real estate tax revenue would be approximately $30,000 per year for the three acres of land that the commercial parking facility utilizes. The Town Zoning Regulations 3.1.3(c) accessory uses in residential districts prohibits the parking or storage of truck trailers, commercial or semi-trailers or commercial trailers. We talked about that. It limits the, the storage location of boats and RVs on one property." So the regulations don't allow for this use, and as we presented before, there's a, there's a definitive need, and we can run through those pictures again. And as we've had up here on the screen, which I haven't highlighted, this is a potential way that this site could be redeveloped. And what we've provided is showing, this is an existing parking area, which is currently impervious surface, sitting fallow and vacant. This could be established to have some, a commercial vehicle parking established with extensive landscape buffers which, which would essentially screen this from, from anywhere. There's already existing vegetation on Route 111. This could be supplemented. And then we could add enhanced buffers as well. So this isn't something that would be a detriment or cause, you know, potential impact. This could certainly add a tremendous amount of value. And as we talk about outdoor storage and the parking of things like that, we can also to look at some of these other top taxpayers. So this is a list of the top 10 taxpayer accounts for the town of Monroe, both real estate and personal property. I want to highlight two on the personal property side. NBC Universal paid $6.2 million in personal property tax in 2018. For that, I want to applaud the commission because the commission approved an application which allowed a property to be used with substantial outdoor storage of Conex boxes and trailers, which is where the majority of that personal property is held. So the property, so the, this commission took it upon themselves to receive an application and favor it and view it favorably, which has added that much tax base to the community because of all that material now stored actually outside in Conex boxes. This was fascinating to me when I saw it. Stewart Amusement is the 10th highest personal property taxpayer in the town of Monroe. Stewart Amusement is located on an acre and a half of property that's zoned, I believe, I-2, on the north end of town, and they have carnival equipment parked outside for a period, for a portion of time. Because actually, sometimes that carnival equipment's actually down in Florida, but it's, it's here in Monroe for long enough where they are one of the 10th, they're the 10th highest taxpayer in the community for personal property. So, so the concept that outdoor storage or commercial parking and vehicles or things like that couldn't add economic tax base is proven to the couldn't add economic tax base is proven to the contrary by the fact that Stewart Amusement, who only has outdoor storage for personal property, is the 10th highest taxpayer in the town.
Good breathing. Good breathing.
Okay. So, moving on to the rest of Will's comments. Zoning enforcement to confirm lease agreements for parking duration is difficult to best, so we've eliminated that from the regulation. Minimum of 30 days is not seen relatively long-term. We've removed that from the regulations. The types of parked vehicles is open to any sort but lacks definition, with this including new vehicles, used vehicles, damaged vehicles, junked vehicles, et cetera. So what we did to the definition, the types of permitted parked vehicles is defined in the proposed commercial parking definition. This would include trucks, commercial vehicles, tractor trailers, boats, RVs, construction equipment and parts thereof have been removed from the definitions, so that would not be allowed to be stored on the property. In addition to vehicles of any sort, this use would permit parking or parts thereof, also not defined. We've eliminated that, so that's no longer a concern. Recent revisions to the zoning regulation, which amended many of the parking standards for different uses, straight away from parking ratios based on number of persons or employees. As we discussed, we eliminated that as well, so there's no longer a parking rate that has to do with number of employees. Moving on, Will's comment. The I2 district already permits a commercial vehicle facility defined as an establishment or commercial licensed vehicles typically consisting of fleet vehicles designed to carry freight, passengers for fee or merchandise. It goes on to finish that definition. What, a commercial vehicle facility is different than what we're proposing. We're proposing a commercial park, commercial parking facility, which would allow someone to come and rent a parking space to park an RV or a boat, or something else, et cetera. Moving on, it is unclear how this new use is to be viewed in the context of permitted agricultural uses. That has to do with the indoor culture of cultivation. So, as the cost of land increases, in Fairfield County, traditional farming has almost disappeared from our landscape. However, indoor cultivation facilities incorporate strategies such as vertical growing and aquaponics to make commercial farming a viable use in our community. Other Connecticut communities have already benefited through tax revenues, redevelopment, and job creation from this burgeoning market sector. Why should Monroe preclude its ability to benefit from the growth potential of this market sector? Will's comment. As proposed to be defined, this may, this use may contradict with the prohibition of marijuana growing. We've eliminated that potential contradiction, and specifically excluded marijuana growing from this facility. Discussion about ventilation or noise odors, as well as the use, storage, and disposal of chemicals. We added some of that into the special exception use. Ventilation, noise, and odors are not typically a concern in an indoor cultivation facility. Plants purify the indoor air, creating an environment inside the building which is cleaner than the outdoor air. The issues related to water and chemical management have been addressed as a special exception supplemental use. The parking standards as we, for the cultivation facility, again, we modified that to be specifically listed, limited to one space per 5,000 square feet of gross floor area. Power generation commercial facilities, we've eliminated that use, so those comments are no longer applicable. Number eight in Will's comments. The new B3 district proposes to accept, or eliminate itself from the longstanding uniform 20% outdoor storage areas. So what we've done is we've proposed, as I said before, to limit the outdoor storage 30% of the gross lot area for the property. And again, we looked at that because the Stevenson lumber property historically has been used for probably exceeding 30% of the overall lot area. And we provided pictures of that at the last hearing, which kind of showed where all those outdoor storage areas were, in addition to outdoor manufacturing. Again, we're trying to create a limit, and the commission would obviously have full control over any application that comes before you, and where that outdoor storage could be located, and how it would be screened. Number nine, the proposed B3 bulk setback standards mirror the B1 and B2, which standards in several instances are less than that required in industrial districts. What we've done is we've expanded that yard setback, when we're building residential zones, to 100 feet, which actually is consistent with the industrial standards in the industrial districts. So we've been able to, I think, address that concern. Number 10, the allowance of gas station canopies, we have a setback. It's allowed in B2. As we discussed previously, we eliminated that from the B3, so that's no longer an issue. There are a number of wording standard inconsistencies between the proposed text and tables. I believe we've revised this to eliminate all those, but if there are any other that staff or the commission has seen, we're happy to continue to fix those. So, number 12, comments 12. In summary, the commission is in the beginning stages of updating the 2010 POCD, which will involve a comprehensive evaluation of the town's vision for future land use for the next 10 years, including a focused assessment of the existing zoning districts, major travel corridors, and presently vacated properties such as the former Stevenson lumber property. As such, the creation of any new zoning districts and the addition of new permitted land uses might be premature at this time, and lacking the benefit of the community data and information, which will be generated and studied during the upcoming POCD update. So, on response, the commission has authority to enact a text change at any point in time. We have indicated the ways in which we believe the POCD supports the current application. Certainly, it does not conflict with the current POCD. If this text amendment is beneficial for the community, there's no reason not to enact it now, just as the commission has made other text changes in the recent past under the existing POCD. We suggest that to not act now is a wasted opportunity. Should the POCD revision determine changes should be made later, perhaps even by expanding the B3 opportunities, then that could be done once the POCD amendment process is complete. Nine years ago, the town of Monroe adopted a POCD which specifically focused on trying to get underperforming properties contributing again, to get underperforming properties reestablished, and it even identified the Lake Zor Stevenson area as one of those priority growth districts. Unfortunately, for the past 12 years, this property has remained vacant. So we do believe that there is a need for this, and this does create a unique opportunity. And with that, I'd actually like to invite Rufus Chambers up, who represents the ownership group of the property, who's owned it for a number of years, and he's going to be able to talk a little bit about some history. And while he comes up, I'm just going to show some pictures. You know, we talked at the last hearing, the pictures on the top actually show some of the graffiti that was on the property. We have an opportunity here because we have an interested party who is a local resident of the community that wants to get this thing productive again. You can see the pictures on top of what this looked like when we were first here in May, and the pictures on the bottom show that how there's been investment in this facility. They've cleaned up some of this graffiti. There's people here actively making sure that it doesn't say Devil's Playground anymore. I think we blurred out a lot of the curse words, so we don't have to blur them out from the new pictures, because that, the area's been cleaned up. So, with that, I want to bring up Rufus and just have him share some thoughts with the commission.
Good evening. My name is Rufus Chambers. I represent Lumber Yard LLC, which is the current owner of the property, which is 1585 Monroe Turnpike. We got control of this property in 2013, and since that time, we've worked with two separate brokerage firms to attempt to sell this. The first was Colliers, and more currently is with CB Richard Ellis. When we originally put this out for, you know, for sale, we had an asking price of $6 million. We have since reduced that price in half, by more than half, to, with an asking price of $2.9 million. When we met with both firms at different times, you know, we were inquiring of what they thought the best prospects for buying the property were, and they said that they thought that the uses would be industrial, business park, as, you know, uses for the property and prospects for buying it. Since that time, we have been approached by a smattering of different types of potential buyers that have included, you know, manufacturing and industrial, simply because there are existing buildings on the site that could be utilized. There's also been what I would call, characterized more quasi-retail. For example, we talked with a lumber, another lumber yard that wanted to explore it. We talked with Tractor Supply Company, which is sort of consistent with what we're talking about because of the nature of the site and the space to put tractors and other things like that. And in addition, a car rental company that wanted to have a portion of the site to store cars, surmising to distribute to other areas where they have, you know, rental properties. My, part of my job in representing the ownership is to find a qualified buyer for the site. So we've had tire kickers from time to time. When we started talking with John Kimball as the buyer, you know, we looked at his experience as a developer, and we looked at what he planned to do with the property, to make sure that what we felt he was going to do was going to be something that could get done. And so, based off kind of the historical use that we had seen that the property had been used for, as well as the feedback that we had been getting through our marketing efforts of different types of uses, whether it be, you know, some, you know, the retail that I talked about, there was boat storage that was inquired about because of Lake Zor, they wanted to use one of the existing buildings. So, based off his experience and his, you know, fortitude to kind of go through this process, you know, we started working with him to do this. You know, while, while we've had all these inquiries from people either spinning out a site or to lease a site, we're not developers. That's not what we do. And we did not want to muddy the waters by selling off a portion and going through this process, you know, a drop at a time, or to encumber the property with leases with tenants when we're ultimately trying to sell the property, and that really was not our goal. Our goal has been to sell it. So, you know, for those reasons, we felt like John Kimball represented the best opportunity to buy this and to get this property back into the community, being a productive property, because as we all know, it's been floundering for a long time, ever since we've owned it, and for many, many years before that. So, I just wanted to give some of that background and history, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have relative to that, but just wanted to give a little bit of that color.
Thank you. Senator, you have any questions?
No.
So, you know, so with that, I did want to just kind of touch on the rendering we have up on the screen again, because we did talk about, you know, potential uses. And while we're talking about a regulation amendment to create a B3 zone, we're being completely transparent with our discussions that this is applicable to a property and a subsequent zone to the application would be forthcoming. But I wanted to kind of show how, how this property could be used. We could use this existing paved area for commercial parking, which could create some revenue and create some activity. We could use some of these other buildings for a number of uses in the B2. But there are real challenges with using, or, excuse me, other uses allowed in the B3. There are some real challenges with trying to use these buildings for uses only allowed in the B2 district. Just to give some, some, a frame of reference, so, based on these building sizes, if we were to look at parking requirements just based on the standard 4/1,000 parking ratios, you know, so building one up on the top of the page is 33,000 square feet. This facility would need 133 parking spaces in order to be used for retail. There are, nowhere is there 133 parking spaces to service this facility. Building two, here, this would require 134 parking spaces to comply with code for retail use. There's no way we could provide 134 parking spaces with any connectivity where, you know, retailer would invest and patrons would go visit to service this facility. You know, building three, this would require 76 spaces. This could be used for retail. There's an opportunity to have some retail parking in front, some retail parking behind. So there's an opportunity for this to be used for that retail use, but it's unlikely that some of these other buildings that were mill buildings or warehouse buildings could really be nicely adapted to these uses in the B2. Building four, down here, this is 10,000 square feet, 41 spaces, you can accommodate that. And then building five, 13,000 square feet, this would need 68 spaces, you could accommodate that. So, some of these buildings, I mean, they might be appropriate for it. And we certainly, I think, if this, if this application is approved and a subsequent zone change is approved, there is opportunity to do some of that stuff. But, but to assume that this property could, will change shape in any substantive way without the commission providing some real consideration on how to enable that redevelopment, I think, is critical at this point. So, so with that, we haven't answered any of the questions the commission has. And again, as I said, our land use council is also here. Any questions for Robin? We'd be happy to hear any thoughts or feedback from the commission.
All right? No questions?
So, I like the concept, only because I used to own a couple of dump trucks. Boy, what a pain in the neck it was to just, if I was there washing in my house, ZEO, that guy would come out, Jack Grant, what was his name? And boy, it was not good. So, I like that because of the fact that there's a lot of guys that I know live in town that are truck drivers, and when they come home, they got to park. Milford, they leave the truck, have somebody pick them up. So, the question I would have is if this goes through, you guys have security there, because these trucks cost just as much as some of these houses.
Yeah, there would certainly be security incorporated as part of that type of operation. Again, to your exact point, someone who's going to use this facility would need to make sure that there's protection in place. There's active security, there's active monitoring and maintenance, and even having a facility where, where there's an office, so that there's somebody there to make sure if people are coming in and out. And we have adequate parking for people to be picking up or dropping off. Absolutely, and that's, there is a need for that. There absolutely is.
Oh, yeah, I definitely know that, because I have people asking me, where can I park if I come to visit? I don't know. So, so I think it's a good concept. I'd be for it, because like you said, it's been vacant for a long time. It's just an eyesore basically going down the hill. So, all right, I'm done.
I'm all set. On the trucking standards, you're sticking with what trucking standards we have now, right? In place, you're creating your own.
Trucking?
For parking trucks. You're going with the standards we have now?
We're creating a commercial parking facility.
But you're going by our standards that we have in place right now, right?
In terms of like dimensional requirements and things like that? Yes, and actually, these spots would be oversized. So, these would be, rather than, you know, standard parking spaces as defined, these would be oversized, you know, 40-foot deep spaces to accommodate a boat or trailer or something of that nature.
So basically, you could park a dump truck here if you wanted to.
Well, you could, yes, and that's what we're proposing.
What Commissioner Ambrosi is asking, we have standards for what size vehicles are allowed, commercial vehicles are allowed to be parked in a residential zone right now? That's what he's asking.
We, this is a, so, so, you're absolutely right. Residential zone properties are limited with what can be parked, where, and how many. This is a, if we adopt this regulation to create a B3 district, we would apply for a zone change for Stevenson lumber to become B3. Having a B3 district property would be eligible to park commercial vehicles, trucks, et cetera, in those parking lots.
And you don't have a standard on that? You just have?
We have supplemental standards for commercial parking, yes.
And what's the weight? You have the weight and all that?
Hmm?
You have the weight and everything on those vehicles?
We don't have weight, because this is, this is a, those are commercial trucks, which are permitted on, registered, they have to be registered with the Department of Motor Vehicles, and that's the requirement that we're creating. So any vehicle that would be parked here has to be registered. It has to be operative.
So you don't have any weight requirements?
We don't have any weight requirements, no. Weight requirements are governed really by the, you know, the state. So, in Connecticut, in Connecticut, you can't have a vehicle over 24 tons.
Right, so basically, you can park tractor trailers?
For, for dump trucks. It's 44 tons in New York.
So basically, you're saying you can park tractor?
You could park, you could park tractor trailers, yes.
The other thing, when you were saying before about the zone, about a B3 zone, you said it wouldn't be a floating zone, or it is a floating zone?
It's not a floating zone. So we're proposing, a floating or an overlay zone would be a zone that said, you can have this zone if this area, if it meets these characteristics. We're proposing to create a B3 zone, just like there's B1 zones, B2 zones, I1 zones, I2 zones, I3 zones. Once a zone change application is brought before this commission and a location is approved, it's no longer floating. It is a zone that exists with a location attached to it. So, so what we did, rather than come in for a regulation amendment and a zone change at the same time, we applied for a regulation amendment first to create the mechanism to apply for the zone change, and then we'd come in for a zone change. In retrospect, we probably should have applied for both at the same time, so there'd be less of a disconnect between when the reg gets adopted and when the zone gets located. So, so, in hindsight, in retrospect, we probably should have applied for both at the same time. But we're not intending to make this a floating zone, we're not looking to make this a floating zone, and the commission has, you know, full legislative authority over any type of application like this.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying that right now, what we're creating, we're creating a floating zone, because we're creating the zone. creating a floating zone, because we're creating a zone that doesn't have a piece of property attached to it. So, we are creating a floating zone.
I, I...
Because it could be attached to any piece of property that meets that requirement.
It can't be attached to any piece of property unless...
That's the definition of a floating zone.
It can't be attached to any piece of property unless...
It could be attached to a certain piece of property that would meet these conditions.
No, it can't. It could be, it could only be attached to a property that this commission approves a zone change for.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying for the zone to exist, it's, it's a zone that doesn't have any place in this town that we're approving right now. Am I, am I not right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
I just wanna clarify, on these trucks, if I come in and I'm driving a tractor-trailer, I'm gonna tell you right now, if I'm loaded, it's gonna be eighty thousand, period, that's it, okay? You know, but most of the time, these guys come home, they've already unloaded, so they're empty. So, I don't, there's no bridges, they can't, when they take a left and go down to thirty-four, the only way they can go is left, they can't go over the bridge anymore. They're banned. So, I mean, for me, I know, I know quite a few that come home off the road after thirty days, and they got no place to go, so, and they're always empty, always. So, this is, for me, it's a good idea, only because I used to drive the thing, so...
Anybody else have any questions?
Your turn.
Staff?
I'd just remind the commission that this isn't about this site, this isn't about that one particular use, it's about the totality of all the, all the standard changes that are being proposed, so it's not just one finite issue. The other is, you had, can you go back to your screen? With regards to this, you were kinda including how this has made difficult for retail, and, you know, obviously, there are a lot of retail properties available across the country. But in the back parking lot area, as you just said, there are oversized spaces, right? And if you look around, you have a lot of macadam area that is sort of not utilized. And if the site was organized in a different way, in that back area where you had the multiple, the larger spaces, you'd get a fair number of parking spaces out of this site. So, I think you could probably get a lot of parking spaces for those buildings. I mean, it depends, you gotta get the user, but, but this site does carry a capacity to fill those types of parking counts on it with these buildings.
Sure, and, and I'm not, I wasn't trying to, and I apologize if my statements were misleading or anything like that. My, my biggest fundamental point that I'm trying to make is, the site itself has challenges. The site itself is, is kind of in the wrong location for the zone that exists and the uses that are permitted on it. Because there's limited, there's limited vehicular traffic around it, there's limited population density around it, and there's a lot of other available retail spaces. So, so yes, I think if a retailer, and if anybody owned this property, if a retailer came and wanted to take sixty thousand square feet, you could certainly accommodate them and provide parking so, to satisfy the requirements. I a hundred percent agree with you. With significant infrastructure investment, you could accommodate users. The problem is, the cost to develop and redevelop the site to accommodate those types of uses doesn't work from an economic standpoint. This building here, for example, Building 1, so this is, this, this building has a, it is, it has a wood floor, and it is, the front half is kind of standard height, the back half is full warehouse height. So, trying to convert this to retail would be incredibly costly from a, from a building modification renovation standpoint, which would be probably more expensive than buying a vacant lot and building a new building from scratch. And then with the added infrastructure cost of trying to accommodate parking that would meet any kind of retailer requirements, it just, it just prices it out of feasibility. So, so I, you're absolutely right, and I, what I was talking about, the availability of parking around these facilities, I'm talking about it in its existing condition, right? If we have, if we have a property with empty buildings, the ideal would be to put users into that building, right? Try to make that space vibrant again. But the current configuration puts a lot of handcuffs and really limits and restricts the ability for that to happen. Sure, if we scraped the whole thing and started over, we could certainly look at that, but the economics just isn't there to support that for this particular piece. And, go ahead.
I was gonna move on to something else.
Okay.
Can you go back to your slide that was the analysis of vacant properties?
Sure.
Okay. So, this came from the Fair County Brokers Meeting.
Yes.
So, if I understand this, is this an analysis of the number of available industrial spaces that are in town that are for sale, or that exist?
So, let me go back to, this is what I passed out, and I have it at the end of my presentation. So, this spreadsheet was handed out, handed out at the brokers meeting at Whitney Farms a few weeks ago. And what this does is highlights every property, every name, every address, how many square feet are available, what the price is, and what type of use it is and what the zone is. So, if you go through this list, all the retail-related developments, all the, you know, B1, B2 developments, this kinda shows all the different spaces that are available for the general public. And if you look, a lot of these are Gaslight Square, Stop &amp; Shop Plaza, Century Plaza...
Yeah, I'm not questioning the retail, it's the industrial.
Sure, so we can go down to those pages, which have that industrial information. So, on to, I can't remember, page four or five, these are I3 districts that are available, and what's allowed. So, these are land leases, right? So, there is vacant property that's available, right? The, the infrastructure costs associated with new ground-up construction for industrial space is, is considerable versus trying to move into existing available space that provides the ability to do those same uses.
Well, that's provided the building and the infrastructure and these codes and is a, you know, is built in a way that is compatible with that use.
Of course, you're, you're absolutely right. But, but the industrial uses that were here, this was a manufacturing facility for decades, and a lot of these uses are constructed where they could be occupied with renovation versus trying to build from a ground-up set. It, you could, there are like...
For, for big open spaces, yes. But NBC, I don't think would have probably found that attractive. I mean, that was probably the one selling factor of that building, is that building was in such a shape for them to move in.
Right.
More cost-effective, it just was more. But the question I had is, when you say it's available, so you've got a number of twelve, and I think at the top of my head, and I just walk around the streets of Monroe, and I, and I, and I was asking the difference between available, like on the market, or that are really existing and available? Because there's, in my mind, a lot more industrial sites that are, that are either vacant or underutilized at the present time than twelve.
I mean, we just took the information from...
No, I get that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to confirm that, 'cause I mean, in Corporate Drive alone, there's four parcels that are empty. And Dusche Park and Pepper Street, there's probably another half a dozen, and then another half a dozen that aren't being utilized the way they should, and, you know, with the right project would be available.
Yeah, and I think, and I think you're right, Corporate Drive, there are a bunch of large parcels that are available, right?
Well, right, and wasn't that not in the calculation, or was it just buildings?
It was, it was, and what we did is, I wanted to differentiate between like vacant land and improved buildings that exist.
And I thought you had dozens of them.
We did. So, I think there were eleven or so vacant industrial parcels, eleven.
Yeah, my only, just to get to the point, I, I think part of your slide was to show that there's a lot of retail available and not so much industrial, and I think that numbers are a lot, maybe not exactly close to each other, but I think they're a lot closer than those numbers you're following.
All we did was take the information that...
No, I don't, I didn't say it was you did, I just...
And again, I think, I think to that point too, like Corporate Drive, you're right, there are a bunch of very large parcels available, but those are looking to accommodate eighty thousand square foot facilities.
Well, there are, but there's five there, and there's six in the Pepper Street Park, and there's six ones that have got something going on right there, that's six more than what you had on that list.
I think, I think it's a question of whether or not they're available and being marketed.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Yeah. Again, we just took the information that was...
That's all. Anything else from staff? Anybody have anything else?
Nope.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment.
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application?
Are general questions allowed?
That comes third.
Okay.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Just come down, please, give your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Hi.
Linda Hanlon, forty-four, Whispering Pine Road. You can tell I'm nervous, I'm not a speaker. So, that's my backyard. And I want you to know, we lived there twenty-five years, we built our own home. And to teach you, you would think I could teach, I could talk. We have a river behind us, it's beautiful. We had a nice train that went to Stevenson Lumber, beautiful, quiet. It's a woodmill, beautiful. Tractor trailers don't belong parked adjacent to my property, or dump trucks. We live in Monroe, the place of Monroe that's beautiful. We have places in Monroe for industry, it's not my backyard. So, I'm not elegant and eloquent, and I don't have a projection, projection to show you, but we live there, we live in Monroe. Please don't let this happen to our backyard, and our birds, and all the animals. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bernaska?
Karen Bernaska, ninety-nine, Bagburn Road. I would just like to say that I concur with Will's final statement. I heard that Monday night, the council approved the contract to hire the consultant to do the POCD.
Yes.
I believe major, a major zone change such as this, and such as been presented this evening, should be considered and be part of the entire discussion of the POCD.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the application?
No, it's a question.
That was a question?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right.
All right, anyone with a general question or comment? Mr. Wiley?
My name is William Wiley, I live at sixteen oh nine River Turnpike. Just really something on way of clarification of a couple of items. One is the clarification on the buffer between, specifically between them and us on the other side of the railroad track. And are you saying that the one hundred-foot buffer lawnmower property would only be for fifty feet on the site property as the rural property would, would cover as the other fifty feet? With the history of the town enforcing the screening already, two residential zones, we're concerned about losing any additional screening. Two, about truck parking, are we talking overnight parking or long parking like that? If there is truck parking, we would say that there should be no overnight running idling or refrigeration units allowed, such as that. If I could be, and as far as Commissioner Wanks there, well, if you look over here, there's trucks parked there already. They park illegally on a vacant property in this, into town, right there, yeah, those are trucks, they park there. It's in Stevenson, and they happen there. These people probably live up in the, why is the mouse keeping on drifting? I'll leave my hand over there. Just that, it might be a matter of convenience of them being able to park on the site, the space being available, but that happens in town already there. I've got nothing about it, but with that. And there's no requirement about putting any fencing up between residential zone and the property itself. We prefer to see something light. And there are no lighting standards, especially if you're gonna have twenty-four-hour parking there, what kind of lighting standards would be described underneath of the zoning, or is that a separate issue?
Well, we have lighting standards already, and it would fall under those standards.
Okay, but that's it. That's my only comment.
Your other question about the, the buffer, what they are proposing with this text amendment is that the railroad, whatever the width of that is, would be part of the one hundred-foot proposed buffer.
And we're requesting that it be increased, that, that, that be counted, and the hundred-foot buffer be from their property line, where it butts onto residential zones. If I could go on to, well, let's see, I'd like to get to the zoning map, I don't know which way to navigate. There it is. And can you zoom in on that? Because I know you were here in trouble before.
And I, well, thanks for reminding me. Just tell everybody.
Ask for help at the same time. I was just having, looking, having a better look at how that looked, it looks like the B2 zone even butts us up, I was thinking about the other property, which are town-owned properties to the south of ours, which are, I guess, within your hundred-foot zone would not, setback would not plod it out because they're outside of that area, that are adjacent butter to it. But that's why I was just, I wanted to see that, as clarifications.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else with any general questions or comments?
William Kuse, I'm eighteen, Whispering Pine Road. My question was, Trust Tech was not addressed at all.
May I address the commission, please?
Oh, Trust Tech was not addressed?
Well, the existing building was shown on the drawings, but...
Right, but it's not, wasn't within his boundary line, I'm just wondering, is anything being done with that?
It's, it's within, it's within this parcel of land.
It would be then.
Yes.
Then, would there be anything done screening-wise to do an extra buffer between that and, and Whispering Pine?
Well, it would depend on what the applicant requests for a zone change. If they requested a zone change for the entire parcel, including the Trust Tech portion of it, then that buffer would be a hundred feet along the residential zone.
All right, next question, the indoor growing. My question would be, what would be the water source?
This is, this is not that specific, this is about...
Okay.
Potential uses in a proposed zone, but we don't get into that kind of detail with the zone.
Well, I gotta say, I'm not crazy about the idea, the trucks, Mr. Wiley already addressed it, it's a twenty-four-hour-a-day operation. I mean, I can see the need for it, but I also can see that it would create problems. I mean, if it was a set nine to five, that's completely different than trucks in and out at all hours of night, because obviously Wiley would hear it, we, our, certainly our end of the street would hear it, and I don't know about anybody else on the Newtown side. That's it for, for now. I have a few more questions, but obviously, there are questions that can't be answered here. Right, thank you.
Right, thank you. Anyone else with a general question or comment? Last chance, anybody? Mr. Solley, back to you.
Thank you, I just wanna address some of the questions and comments from the, from the public, and thank you, Wiley, for coming up to talk, I know it's very easy. So, first on the idling and things like that, so the DEP has a requirement that, as a regulation, that you're not allowed to have stuff idle overnight and things like that. But from a, from an enforcement standpoint, if, if this is approved and a subsequent application is made, there, the commission itself can put in limitations to hours of operation for that specific thing, saying cars can't come in after a certain times and things like that. So, that can be dealt with in a special exception permit process. Another comment about the Trust Tech facility and buffers and things like that, if this regulation is adopted and a subsequent zone change is approved, yes, absolutely, there would be additional buffer requirements established from the residential zone boundary surrounding the Trust Tech building to the, any operation that can move into that facility as part of a special exception permit. And I can tell you that existing, the existing operation that's out there does not provide a hundred-foot buffer from where that operation existed, when it operated during two thousand five, six, seven, et cetera. And they actually had outdoor manufacturing outside, there was a pad here where they actually manufactured... There was a pad here where they actually manufactured trusses, and the overall extent and limit of this developed area is far within that hundred-foot buffer. So, if this regulation is adopted, and subsequent zone change was approved, you would be increasing and requiring additional buffer requirements that aren't currently established on the property. There's also a comment about the, the buffer from residential zone boundaries and the existence of a railroad right-of-way. When we presented at the last hearing, we talked about that, and we kinda talked through, well, if there's already an existing right-of-way, maybe we don't include that, that in the buffer requirement. Based on some comments from tonight, we're happy to eliminate that asterix and the requirement that that hundred-foot buffer be provided from the residential zone boundary, even if it's in the middle of a railroad right-of-way, we'd be happy to concede that point. And if it would please the commission, you could modify that from the, from the application, and make sure that any required buffer would be from the residential zone boundary, even if it is in the middle of a, of a railroad right-of-way parcel.
Okay. Typically, the way those buffers work, they're from the property line, if you, adjacent to the residential district, not from the district boundary.
The, the regulation in the regs does specifically say from a residential zone boundary. So, I think that gives protections where if, if the residential zone boundary is off the property line, the reg, the commission could enforce that.
Yeah, I guess it's, it's, maybe that is correct, because the properties we've been dealing with are budding properties, they're not-
Right.
There's no right-of-way in between them.
Right. It's almost, it's the same thing as if, when there's a zone line down the middle of a road.
Right, but you, yeah, roads, yeah, true.
So, in summation, you know, I think, I think we've had a couple really good discussions on this application. Again, you know, for the record, we believe that there is a need to allow for some greater flexibility for the development, or the commission should consider how to manage the orderly development in the zoning regulations as it applies to certain properties, especially certain larger properties. And we think that, as a perfect example, Stevenson Lumber operated in existence for decades, and was a high contributor to the commercial tax base in the community, and operated with a mix of industrial, manufacturing, warehousing, and even some retail components. It operated under what would fit in the B-three zoning regulations as we proposed it. We feel that we've demonstrated that our proposal complies with the current plan of conservation and development. It meets all of those recommendations in terms of trying to look at large parcels, get them contributing again, getting them active again. The only uses that we're proposing are ones that were historically grandfathered on the property, and we're proposing two new uses, which don't propose any real noxious uses, and could fit into this, and allow for the, the site and its existing infrastructure to be contributing again to the tax base, and to get this property vibrant again. Because the longer it lays fallow, the more likelihood there is for additional vandalism and crime, and bad stuff that you don't wanna see happen. And I think what we proposed is a reasonable proposal. I think it, it, it gives the commission the ability to really control how this could happen versus, you know, how someone could try to come in for a grandfather application and do something different. So, you know, we believe that we've, we've, we've met the, you know, we can, we can comply with the P O C D, we comply with the comprehensive plan, and we respectfully request that commission grant us an approval.
Okay. What do you think? Everybody good? Any other questions? Go.
Close it, close it.
Hearing is closed. Nine forty-five. Okay, next up. Item number eleven, Site Development Plan and Permit Amendment Modifications, we have nothing. Item number twelve, Time Extensions. First up is regarding Z C A two thousand eighteen dash oh-two, file number one zero one three D. There's a typo on the, a copy of the agenda I have, but it's five seventy-five Monroe Turnpike. Request for a ninety-day extension of time to file final plans. We have a letter from Russo and Rizio LLC, Dear Mr. Agresta, this letter shall serve as a request on behalf of Antonio Ferrera, the applicant, and Carolyn W. Green, the owner, for an extension of ninety days for the final plans to be signed and recorded as set forth in the Zone Boundary Change Approval dated April eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. The applicant recently received S E P approval, and is now addressing the conditions of both zoning approvals. If this extension request is approved, the new expiration date will be October sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. I expect this to potentially be filed tomorrow. All right, so they, they- I gave them the final green light today. Okay. So, the next up is just to record it. We were trying to do it today, but we didn't work, and, okay. Do we have a request for an extension? We need a motion? Somebody? Motion.
To, for ninety-eight, Z C A two thousand eighteen oh-one, file number-
Oh, two.
Oh, two, oh, two, I'm sorry. File number ten thirteen D, five seventy-five, Monroe Turnpike.
Second. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
No, sir.
Call the roll?
Condon, yes.
Wilk, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes. Next up, thirteen dash one, S E P, file number one five one eight A, five seventy-nine Main Street. We have a letter that actually addresses both items, that and thirteen dash two, Z C A, file number nine nine three D, five seventy-nine Main Street. A letter from Russo and Rizio. Dear Mr. Agresta, this shall serve as notice on behalf of Real-Time Investments LLC, the owner of the property located at five seventy-nine Main Street, Monroe, Connecticut. The owner regarding special permit thirteen dash one dash S E P, file number one five one eight A, approved by the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, originally dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand thirteen. That, under recent case law, had been found that the special exception does not, does not expire. The email is the, the relevant thing? Okay. It's, it is on the cover of that, it is posted. The email says, please see attached letter in regards above residence's application. I will not be proceeding on behalf of my client McDonald's USA LLC, and respectfully withdraw from tonight's hearing. And then he goes on to say that he is of the opinion that their approval does nev, does never expire, so that's something that he can discuss with the town attorney. So, that application has been withdrawn.
For, for both of those, or just for the-
Both of them. The, the S E P and the zone change have both been withdrawn. Item number thirteen, Bond Releases or Reductions, we have none. Item fourteen, Meeting Minutes, for June twentieth. Porter, Ambrosi, Mayne, Wilk, Condon. Motion?
Most approve of meeting minutes for June twentieth, two thousand nineteen.
As drafted.
As drafted.
Second. Have a motion, we have a second, is a second? Brenna? Rowan?
I beat him. I beat him.
Any, any comments, corrections?
No, sir.
Can I call a roll?
Condon, yes.
Wilk, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes. Pending application deliberations and determinations. First up, we have E F P two thousand nineteen dash oh-one, file number one oh-two, for one oh-four Elm Street. This is an excavation and filling permit. Application from Connecticut House LLC, affecting a lot of approximately six point two-two acres at one oh-four Elm Street in an R F one zone. The applicant is also seeking a resubdivision approval on this same piece of property. All of the proposed excavation fill activities under this permit would be on lot three. The proposal seeks the excavation of a depression to provide compensatory flood storage within the site's flood plain to the west of an existing material stockpile which will remain. There will be no import or export of material. Site's not within five hundred feet of the town boundary. Site also includes an unimproved curb cut access of its southern reach for access to the rear portions of the property, which access will be utilized for the project. Aquarion and the Commissioner of Public Health have been notified. Public hearing was open and closed on June twentieth, two thousand nineteen. We have Porter, Ambrosi, Mayne, and Ken, you were seated for this. Ryan, you were not. So, turn around and take a motion.
Yeah, make a motion, we approve E F P dash twenty nineteen dash zero one dash file number one oh-two E, one oh-four Elm Street, for the excavation and filling permit.
As drafted.
As drafted. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
No, sir.
Call the roll?
Wilk, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes. Uh, next up, S U B two thousand nineteen dash oh-one, file number one two six four C, one oh-four Elm Street, this for a resubdivision. Three lots out of one existing parcel. Lot line revision plan was proposed to eliminate an encroachment condition from a neighboring property septic system. Site's not within five hundred feet of the town boundary. No new roads, road extensions, or public sidewalks are proposed. Payment of fee in lieu of onsite open space land reservation is proposed. Existing accessory barn and separate shed structures will be demolished. An existing lot, lot cabin on lot, proposed lot one will remain as an accessory storage building for the principal use of lot one only. An existing single-family dwelling will be retained on proposed lot three. Driveway access for proposed lots one and two will be via a new, separate individual driveways off Elm Street. New subsurface septic disposal systems will be constructed on all three lots. An existing public water main extends across the frontage of the subject property. And service connections are proposed for the three lots. And the sites within the Farmville Reservoir Watershed, and Aquarion, and Commissioner of Public Health have been noticed. And on January seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, the Inland Wetlands Commission issued a positive referral. Public hearing was opened and adjourned on March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, reconvened and adjourned on May second, two thousand nineteen, reconvened and closed on June twentieth, two thousand nineteen, with a statutory extension by the applicant.
There was one issue, I think, that needs some discussion, on the appraisal?
There was, uh-
Appraisal? Page five. On page five, two A. And there's substantive input from the town attorney on that?
Okay, the, we received some input from the town attorney regarding the appraisal. The appraisal should be for the, the land only, not the property, meaning not the house. So, where we had some discussion previously about the appraisal, including the existing house, further conversations with the town attorney brought up that, that in fact is not the proper way, it should only be the land. So, the appraisal that we had for one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the six point two-two acre parcel is the correct number.
So, the change I would make to A, is I would substitute, instead of what says in A, is that the appraisal by Richard A. Prispey, the Prispey Group LLC dated, I forget the date specifically, the date of that appraisal, which is sixty thousand dollars, is accepted by the commission. So, that's what I would put its place. So, that records the amount and the acceptance of the appraisal.
Okay. Actually, we, we voted on the first one, we probably should've just given you a referral. We already voted on the, the filling permit.
That's okay.
But this one will just have you do the-
You can, you just amend, or just amend.
I know, but normally, we don't, we don't vote on a draft.
You what?
Normally, we don't vote on the draft.
When you vote.
We have you do, don't we have you do the final one?
Is this a one?
Okay. All right, I just got confused.
We're just words, we're just words missing one, that's all.
All right, so, on page five, two A, is going to be amended, as Wilk just said, we're gonna go with-
One hundred and sixty thousand.
One hundred and sixty thousand dollar appraisal.
On land. On the land only, I think.
Right. Nothing else in this section has to be-
No.
Modified? Okay, so Leon, I want you to modify your motion to include-
Leon has motion, okay.
Can you make a motion yet?
No.
Oh, okay. So, let me make a motion. Whoever makes the motion, make sure you- note the change in item two A on page five. So.
Two A?
We're ready.
Two A on page five.
Page five. Hundred and sixty thousand land only.
Uh, motion to approve S U B two thousand nineteen dash oh-one, file number two, one two six four C, one oh four-
Five.
I have four, so everybody-
Six five.
Six five. All right, six five. We'll go with six five, like everybody else has, except for me. Okay. File number one two six five C, one oh four Elm Street, with the, with the appropriate change of section two A, page five, one hundred and sixty thousand land only, as drafted. With that change.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion?
Yeah, Ken got the second.
Okay.
Commissioner Wilk made second to the, any further discussion?
No, sir.
All right. Call the roll?
Wilk, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
That was a lot.
And we know these assets. Okay, next up. Next, we have five thirty-seven Monroe Turnpike. This was an S E P for adding the two dog washing stations in the back of the store. Make a motion to approve. Well, I, this is so minimal, I wanna just, um, process, put this through tonight and process it.
That's fine. Because we're not really gonna, rather than submitting a, a drawing which we already have, who's standing.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve, five nine three S A one, file one two two six A, fifty-three seven Monroe Turnpike.
Second.
To do what?
Motion to approve-
Dog wash.
Dog wash.
Dog wash facility, or pecking facility?
Okay.
As you.
All right, so we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Ambrosi. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Call the roll.
Gandon, yes?
Wilk, yes.
Mayne, yes?
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Who's the second?
Leon.
Thank you.
Okay, we have 296 Garter Road, SRH-2019-01, this is for new private residence on a scenic road. They're going to put in an asphalt driveway, the asphalt's going to stop the property line, and the apron in the right of way will just be gravelled, just like the road. They're going to add the signs along the back of the conservation easement every 50 feet. Was there any other conditions?
Any in yours?
No, I had worked all by now.
Yeah, they spent for gravel.
Yeah, yes. Will, do you want this one to wait for a draft?
We do have to make some findings based on the records, so.
Okay.
It's okay with you?
Then, we're going to make a referral to the administrator. How do we want to refer this?
To draft a letter of approval?
Okay, draft a letter of approval, please. There were a number of housekeeping conditions, I believe, that staff had that are going to be worked into the approval. The bond was agreed upon at $22,000. The back parking lot, we're going to at least get the binder course down immediately unless Inland Wetlands gives them a waiver on that. What else did we have for conditions?
On the retaining wall, you said I could work with them to avoid it.
In that little section?
Yeah, so I'll do that. And then undermine, just there's a requirement for certification of the compliance of the.
The riprap?
Well, no, the drainage, which is just a standard requirement anyway. Showing the connection piping of the drainage to the roof drainage to the drainage system, which they have no problem with. And under traffic and safety, they're okay with the stop bar, the offset center line stripe, and the stop sign, providing the guide rail along the steep down gradient slopes. And that is, and send them just a silt sack and run the new bases, and that was it for me.
Okay.
Were there any parameters you wanted to place with regards to the schedule, relaysing that part of this is to, there's three things going on here. It's finishing the site to the degree to give a CO on the existing building. Then there's amendment to the site based on what was originally approved versus what is now being proposed, which is a mixture of what they built it to, plus what they're altering it to accommodate the second building, and then obviously this is the second building.
Well, I think that the construction, the proposed construction schedule that was presented by the applicant on page 11 and 12 should be incorporated into the approval.
As far as schedule goes, and what they said they're going to appeal to Wetlands about is a requirement that, this is on the Inland Wetlands approval. With this approval, the applicant shall be responsible for requesting a required, I'm sorry, I'm a moron, reconstructing, I thought there was something in here about the page. They got the same requirement for the engineer's certification on the drainage, they've got a requirement for certification of geotechnical engineer for verifying the rear riprap slope. So, the following referral comments are hereby extended to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Inland Wetlands is requesting that the Planning and Zoning Commission be especially mindful of the potential future impacts to wetlands by businesses, business uses in the building and throughout the site. Depending on the type of use, outdoor storage maintenance and non-maintenance practices and drainage conditions enhanced protections may be necessary to protect this area, that is, the headwaters of the Aquaric River. And the second comment is, if additional permanent protective measures or variations in development are required, this application results should be referred back to the Inland Wetlands Commission. So, they did not, I'm still looking, but I don't think they had a requirement about the timing.
Well, in their proposed schedule, they have July 15th to September 20th, regrade rear of existing building in the area that currently has millings and installed binder called asphalt paving. So, we're going to incorporate that into the approval.
Yep.
There was another item that was from the previous comments from me, in response to the latest round regarding some signage on site that is unauthorized. Their response was that that's going to be removed. So, I didn't reiterate that in my current memo, but that's something I should reflect in the approval too, that gets done.
Oh, yeah, I just, I just found it on the Wetlands. I don't know how I missed it, but. So, it says that, considering that the approval also represents allowance to proceed with the work, considered to be remediation and restoration relative impacts associated with the existing site conditions, the following corrective protective measures shall take place by the deadline date specified. So, items to be addressed immediately as soon as possible were to remove, removal of oil, stain gravel within the rear yard presently being utilized for equipment, and they're aware of that. Installation of sedimentation control fencing, which they've done, removal of sedimentation from the existing catch bases and respective drainage system, I believe that was done as well. Installation of sediment control measures as needed upon further removal of unapproved storage equipment and vehicles. So, they wanted that stuff done right away, most of it has been. And then items to be addressed by August 31st is completion of the asphalt pavement, at least the binder course, and curbing as approved, required prior, per the original approval, IO 626, to the proposed limit to the top of slope. So, that's where that came from.
Anybody have any other conditions that we're?
Listen.
Oh, yeah, just note that the, on the floor plan for the truck service facility, the waste oil tank is 275 gallons, not 75. What do you think?
Draft approval.
Next up, we have RAA-2019-05, file number 1006E, proposed B3 zoning district. Who wants to start?
Well, I'll tell you, just looking at Rick's, his report, he's already, they've already sent the CEO off for non-permitted commercial vehicles in residential areas. This is a win-win situation. I mean, got to have someplace to park these things. I don't want to park my truck two towns over.
Okay, Ken, you gotta realize though, that's one.
Yeah, I know, I know that, but that's a big part of it. That's a big part of it, but the buildings, I mean, those buildings are pretty structurally sound right now, especially that main one coming in that, where the office was.
No one's disputing that.
So, I mean, what else is going to go in there?
The thing is, is Will, it's not just that property.
This is just the zone.
It's what we're doing, is we're approving a zone.
Right.
We're not approving it for Stevenson. We are proving this here is to create the new zone.
Okay.
It doesn't, they may want to attach it to Stevenson, but it's not attached to Stevenson right now. This is, you're just creating a zone that can go anywhere in this town that meet these requirements. I just want you to be understood of that. So, this could go in your backyard, somebody has 10 acres on a, on a commercial piece of property, they could park a tractor trailer truck on this, with this zone. So, I just want to let you know that this zone is not attached to Stevenson in any way, they might want to use it for Stevenson, but this zone could be put anywhere in town, on a commercial piece of property, or really any property that meets 10 acres.
With commission approval.
With commission approval.
But they're also going to put in businesses too, correct?
They could, they don't have.
They could, they don't have to.
I know, but we're still just talking about the zone.
Remember, we're not talking about a site plan, we're not talking about a piece of property.
We're talking about a zone.
So, you have to differentiate between a zone.
Yep.
And a site development plan. They're two entirely separate animals. So, we're talking about a zone, all right? And like Leon said, this, this proposal calls for this potential zone to be on parcel of land that's at least 10 acres. So, it doesn't mean it's Stevenson lumber. It could be a 10 acre parcel, you know.
Anywhere in town.
We would have the say over whether or not we felt it was appropriate for that to be a B3 zone, but any property could be, a property owner that has 10 acres could apply for a zone change. I just want to state a couple of things. You know, we met with the applicant at the Regulation Subcommittee meeting, had a very, very brief meeting, one time that I recall, where we were talking specifically about the Stevenson lumber property. And the Regulation Subcommittee agreed that in order to potentially develop that piece of property, we had to do something with our zoning regulations, because they were kind of hamstrung by what they could do or couldn't do based on our current zoning. And that was the extent of our conversation with them about the proposed uses. You know, they mentioned a few different ideas, but we never had any in-depth conversations about it. The proposal that is before us now, in my opinion, is not sound planning. It's, it's a shotgun approach where we take basically 85 or 90% of the permitted uses in town and throw them into a zone, and see what can be developed, or see what comes along. I, I think that it's too much mixing of business and industrial. You know, in the past five or six or seven years, we have kind of muddied the lines between different zones by allowing different uses that really weren't zone, not really meant for a specific zone, and we allowed uses to cross between zones. And I don't think that does anything 100% positive for the town. It might develop properties, but I don't think we want just any property because we've created a zone that allows it. I, I think it's, I think it's dangerous. Plus, this is an area that is, has been specifically cited as an area of study for the new POCD. I mean, it's a 40 acre parcel, something needs to be done there, but I think just allowing anything that comes along to go in there is not what we should be looking to do.
Will POCD recommend what should go in there?
Wasn't it supposed to last time?
There will be recommendations about development of that particular parcel made by the consultant. Now, who knows what they'll say, and that, you know, and that's, again, it's part of the plan that we as a commissioner are putting together for the next 10 years for the town. So, we have input into that too. If they come back and say, we think you should put a auto salvage yard on that piece of property, you know, we're going to tell them, no, we don't think that's the appropriate use for that property. So, the commission has a lot of input. They're consultants, they're, we are the commission. But it is an area that we've asked them to pay special attention to and make recommendations.
Now, back just to this zoning though, because I know you said it was, it is Stevenson, it's not Stevenson, I mean, we could very well approve this and then not approve it for Stevenson.
The applicant was very clear, if this B3 zone is approved, they are going to apply for the Stevenson lumber property.
And if we approve this, it doesn't necessarily mean we approve that, because maybe.
That's absolutely correct.
My question is, could we start looking at this as a model? Can we go, like, is there an option right now for us to go through and just start pulling things out that we don't think, and try to merit, make it a little more specific and a little more now? We talked earlier in the evening about mixed use for putting residential apartments, is that something we could maybe add to this, make it smaller, have a new district that then we focus on putting in where it's appropriate?
So, you're talking about potentially rewriting the whole thing?
Or parts of it.
That's basically everything.
Yeah. But I mean, they did take out, from when they last talked to us, the construction vehicles, I believe, being parked.
Right.
Or equipment, which was something we were concerned about. They added the marijuana stipulation, which I think is redundant, because we're already, the whole, I think, town is zone, no marijuana. They got rid of the.
Carnival.
The carnival equipment, but then also told us how great of a tax asset that's been for the town. I thought that was interesting. And totally dropped the utilities and alternative energy. I don't know, I mean, is it something we want to just throw out, or is it something we want to try to make work? That's my kind of question, everybody. Even if it is pulling in a lot of other things.
I suppose you call it, the top end of that was like a solar farm.
It was something they had thought, well, again.
A proposal at one time, wasn't it?
Separate from that? You're talking about Stevenson lumber again?
Stevenson lumber, the back part of it, they wanted to.
We had, we had someone come in and, under a general appointment, and speak to us about potentially putting in a residential subdivision up on the Trust Bank property, but that was just a general appointment.
I guess what I'm saying, I like the idea of a mixed use zone, I like the idea of making it a little smaller. I do feel like this is thick, and, you know, there are other towns and places where you can go to, you know, some retailer or brew pub or something that's also right next to a factory or a industrial thing. What else? They also removed gas stations technically, or at least ones with awnings.
Like I said, this, this basically goes for a maintain, 10 acre parcel. So, it's, it can go anywhere in town, so it's like, it's not like, you know, well, you have to approve, don't get me wrong, but you're just setting a regulation, you can put this somewhere, anywhere in town.
So, my, my question is, what in here don't you want?
There is no place right now, except for, like, they're using Stevenson, but that, we're setting, we're setting a zone.
It could be another zone, yeah.
We don't have a specific place to put it right now. They, what they do, but we don't. Like, there's not like a parcel that we could pick out and say, well, all this, we're going to use this as a B3. Or change from like Pepper Street to Pepper Street, we're going to change all that to a B3. That's not what we're doing here. We're creating really what it is, what I believe is a floating zone.
Basically, by doing this, we'd be opening up a can of worms then.
Well, I say you could put it anywhere. If you, if you find a few lots together on Main Street, and people call them all out, you got 10 acres, you could potentially put something like this on Main Street.
And is that, that's something we don't want?
Well, it all, it all depends, the word is.
And what's in it?
But we don't know that, because, you know, it would have to come in front of us. And the same thing with Stevenson, they would have to come in front of us for us to approve Stevenson. We don't really have to approve this zone for Stevenson, but. But it, it may work for Stevenson, but we don't have to approve it for Stevenson. So this, right now, is just like, I consider I have issues with it being a floating zone because it doesn't, we don't have, like, we didn't set up a special area for it. Like, we didn't say, well, we'll take half the industrial park and make it a B three. You know what I'm saying? So it's not, we didn't do any of that. It's not like that we put this in a mapped out area where it's going to be. It can be anywhere in town as long as it meets these requirements and we approve it. I understand that, you know, like you say, you want to go into this and get into this a little bit deeper. That's going to take a long time for us to get into this.
Yeah.
Because certain things like, how many trucks do you want to be parked there? What can they accommodate?
The lot too has got to go to the subcommittee, subcommittee's got to write, and it's going to back out to, it's a year long process.
And we're not afforded a long time. What's the timeframe?
Well, it's really, you're approving what they're proposing. You're not, I mean, you have some latitude to click and pull out of it, but, you know, it's not like we're going to handle.
Yeah, yeah, we.
We can.
Well, and again, I'm talking more about, you know, you're looking at here, going through their graph and removing specific things, if that was the concern. Taking out the broader and, you know. Do they?
Yes.
Yeah, as opposed to us looking and being like, we'll approve this with those amendments or changes? Can't do it?
No, we could, no.
We could change it with amendments, you can say right now.
We could write a whole amendment.
Right. We have to write a whole amendment.
I'm just saying, it's an option. Is that something?
Well, what, what we're just saying is, you know, we're, we have an application for us to vote on. You know, we can make some minor conditions of an approval, but we can't rewrite the whole thing under an approval.
Yeah, and again, I don't think I'm talking about rewriting. I liked a lot of what they had written in here. I'm talking about more of the, I mean, if you decide you want apartment use or you don't want, I don't know.
Well, if you start adding something, things like uses that weren't proposed.
Or just, or even just removing, maybe don't add.
Removing is different than adding something that wasn't part of it because nobody had an opportunity to understand that component.
Yeah. Okay, so then just going through and removing, picking, let's see. If you were to go through and, you know, they wanted an S C P for autobod, or automobile body shop and service shop, take that out. We decide we don't want that.
That's already in a B two already.
This is a B three. This is a new zone.
No, I understand, but you, then you're just taking stuff that.
Making a new zone. It doesn't necessarily have to be completely two zones.
I know, but you're just taking stuff that's already approved in a B two.
Yeah.
And so what's the sense of making a B three? You're going to take it out.
If it's a zone, it was referenced, it was referenced in here. You're taking away the extreme I's and the lighter Bs and trying to find some sort of middle ground to make some sort of mixed use that narrows the field of thought process. I'm just concerned that we might have a slight opportunity here and to just fall out, say no, without considering or thinking about the idea of whittling it down to make it something that is a little more.
Well, we, we always have that opportunity.
Yeah. So.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, this, which is true, we do have that opportunity, we always have that opportunity.
The subcommittee can write a B three zone at any time.
So, is that something that? But again, you said that would, that's like a year in the making.
I mean, or, or you can add uses to a B two.
Not a year, a year's a stretch, but you still got to.
It'd be a certain requirement. You understand what I'm saying? So, right, can't we do that? We could do that if we want, right?
But then that would apply to all B twos.
Correct.
Right, but they would have to get approval, right?
If we make it, if we make, if we make a use subject to a special exception permit, that use approval has to come to the commission.
So what's the alternative then with it?
With this?
Yeah.
It's a vote no, or it's a vote yes, or it's a vote yes with amendments. Those are pretty much the three options.
Well, like Will said, making a large number of amendments is not the way to go. So our options are approve it, deny it. The commission can always take this and then tweak it and resubmit it as a commission submitted application for a new zone. The commission can look at modifying some of the uses within an existing zone. We have, we have a number of avenues that we can take.
I, I'm more for the, I'm not against a B three zone per se. But, uh, I think this could be a, the groundwork to it, I just don't think this could be, to me, this, I don't think works for, for a B three zone. I think we could make one, and I think this could be like ground laying instead of filing.
I am not opposed to a, a new zone. I'm not opposed to expanding uses within an existing zone. We can, we can expand uses with conditions. You know, there are a number of things we can do, but I don't think that taking all of this stuff and saying, all right, here we got a new zone. I don't think it's, it's the way to go.
Me either. I, I, I really don't think so.
So then what if, well, okay, it's not what they've implied, so. So then another alternative would be for like the hydroponic farming, indoor farming, adding that to a B two, B two zone would be a request that could happen or something. Would someone have to request it, or is it something we could consider in some committee?
That's something we could consider.
And same thing with the parking for a.
You know, everyone, it's in the town's best interest for that piece of property to be developed.
Yeah.
To be developed properly.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that that can be done, and I think it can be done a number of ways, like I said before. Expand uses in an existing zone, create a new zone, but I, this is, I think this is too much.
And, I mean, I understand that that's, that's exactly what it is, but it's, you know, whether whittling it down or going through and, you know.
That's, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
I'm one of five.
Well, my opinion is, I know that, that Stevenson is a unique piece of property. I have that, and I, and I understand that. I just don't want to create a zone that can be used anywhere in town. I would, but just to dr, I would just, like Mr. Solly said, he, maybe you should have came in here with an application for Stevenson lumber.
Well, he told us it's going to be for Stevenson.
No, I understand that, but it's something that, instead of creating a zone to cover that, I mean, I rather, I would rather work with something on Stevenson, on uses that they would need there in the subcommittee or whatever, and then maybe we could put some into the B two, autonomy for that.
Tweak it that way?
Tweak it that way. But I, I just, I mean, I think a floating zone is, is, I consider it a floating zone. I just.
I agree with you, yeah.
Because you could, you could always tweak whatever with the zone without changing it. There, there are no B three zones.
Within reason.
Right.
Within reason, right.
Right, I understand that.
We're not, we're, it wouldn't be responsible for us to, to take, to say that, you know, a use that is totally inappropriate for that zone.
Yeah.
Would be something we add to the zone. The other thing that I, that I have some issue with is the outside storage component. You know, we have, we have B two uses and B two zones that are limited to twenty percent outside storage, twenty percent of their footprint. Now, taking some of those same exact.
This one was like thirty percent or something. This one was like thirty percent.
Thirty percent of the lot.
Of the lots.
Not of the building. So we're taking that same exact B two use, and now that guy goes into a B three zone and he's on.
He could pay three acres of his tent.
He could have.
Oh, you want to see that much asphalt?
A tremendous amount of outside storage. Now, there are uses that I agree can, can and should have more than a twenty percent outside storage under certain conditions. So I'm not opposed to that in concept, but I'm opposed to across the board.
So it's forty. That's twelve, is it?
Yeah, that's a lot.
So what do we want to do?
I, I'm a denial.
So here.
I'm sorry, you're here.
So am I.
Okay.
There we go. That's three denials.
We have, we have three firm denials, so go forward with that. There was nothing else for deliberation, was there?
Nope.
All right, regulation review amendment work session. We had a meeting this past Monday where we talked about potential I four zone in the center of the Pepper Street industrial park. We met with a property owner for the, the large parcel in, in the center. And talked about some potential uses, some things that we don't want to see there. So they're getting some more information together and they'll be getting back to us and we'll be scheduling another meeting to further discuss the creation of an I four zone. Correspondence, other received. I have nothing. Commission reports, I have nothing. Any commissioners?
No sir.
Rick, you want to go over your report?
Okay, Z B A was canceled this month and August as well. Their next meeting is September third. As the chairman just discussed, the regulation subcommittee met on July fifteenth for sixty-four Cambridge Drive, for Independence Drive. The owner was instructed to come back for a follow-up meeting with additional information. Zoning enforcement program, thirty-one William Drive, work is in progress. Hyrum Road, citation was sent. The town attorney is involved. And this will come to a resolution by September. One twenty-six Main Street, that was resolved. One Roosevelt Drive, resolved. Fifteen, Pat Child registered motor vehicle, owner contacted and reached a new vehicle by August. Fifteen, Oldwood Drive, non-permitted commercial vehicle, essentially that's an excessive one ton. Letter of voluntary compliance sent to owner, work in progress. Going to the Anti Blight, six eighty-five Main Street, the former suckle dog stand. The owner, our elderly individuals, the next of kin was, talked to with the zoning enforcement officer. They understand the, the need to demolish it. The, the structure cannot be salvaged, so it is going to be a demolition.
When's that going to take place?
Six eighty-five.
Did they say when that's going to take place?
Oh, wow, this is a, a immediate need because of public safety.
Did they give that, did they give the Z O a timeframe?
Uh, I don't believe so. We're still working on that. I'm going to be giving you updates at every meeting in this one.
Is that just the hot dog stand itself or the house behind it?
Uh, we're concentrating on the hot dog stand because it's ready to fall down.
Does he live in that house?
No.
Okay.
Okay, planning matters. Congratulations, the town council approved it Monday.
I'm sorry, I have a question. The eighty-six and eighty-eight Hyrum Road?
Yep.
A citation was sent over?
Yes.
And now what?
They have agreed to resolve it.
Who's they?
The owner. The owner wants to sell it to one of the occupants.
I know, but they've been talking about that forever.
Yeah, this time, there's a timeframe to it.
What's the timeframe?
Timeframe is November first.
So by November first, this issue will be resolved?
Yes, or we take it to the next level with enforcement.
So November first, they're, they're hopefully closing?
They're closing, that's correct.
They're going to close on that house and then one person will occupy both?
The owner has to occupy, either reside in the principal or the, okay.
Thank you.
The P O C D, we move forward. Mr. Chairman, did you decide on the date?
No.
Okay. That's a work in progress. Uh, no special meetings in July. And no, um, new single family dwellers will process this recording period, so.
All right. I had a report on the minor site plan application process, which I was supposed to give you an update on. We actually issued one.
Perfect.
And the first one was for the former Really Good Stuff facility, which you kind of approved parts of it. In the course of it, they've added a dumpster.
Yeah, the what?
A dumpster closure in an existing neighborhood.
Good.
And they, so back to the first one. And number two is probably going to be the town.
The what?
Number two is going to be the town, probably. Let's see.
Anybody have anything else?
No sir. April staff have anything else?
August first, is that certain?
Okay. We are adjourned.
August first?
Ten thirty-eight.